I will call to order the October 17th Planning Commission meeting. And let's do --
I'll call the roll call.
Okay. Let's do roll call.
Kirline, Ezit, Green, Ketchum, Gonzalez, Parber, sorry, Gonzalez, Parber, Lamott, and Sher Hamilton?
Here.
And -- And Laura just arrived.
So, let's start with the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments or changes to the agenda? And we'll deal with the consent items after the agenda. Nope. I will entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Great. So, the agenda is passed. Okay. So, now we will move on to consent items. And --
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes, sorry. Oh, we have to do the three minutes for non-consent. Thank you very much. So, is there anyone here who would like to speak to an issue not on our agenda for this evening? So, this is open public comment period. And the public and for viewing audience, you are also welcome to come down to any meeting and speak to us for three minutes on any item that's not on our agenda. Seeing no one in the audience, now I will move on to consent. Okay. So, let's move to consent items. So, if there's anyone in the audience, or if there's staff comments on this, or we've got questions before we decide whether to just go ahead and leave things on the consent, we can go ahead. And usually, it's for folks who would like to talk about a reason why we might want to pull it off the consent agenda. So, if there's anyone who wants to speak to that, or -- okay, come up and -- come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and go ahead and tell us a little bit about --
It's on. Okay. My name is Judy Bersalieri, and I live at 159 Lansdale Avenue in Fairfax. And one of the consent items was our neighbor who is planning an addition to the house. So, I just have some concerns. They had asked us to come over, and we looked through the plans with them. And there were some things that I talked about that I want to just put forth to you. The first one was the duration of the construction. The second was parking and deliveries. And the third was just kind of protection measures of my property while the construction is going on. So, if I can just go over some of the things that I wrote down?
Yeah, I think -- Okay. Before we go into detail, I think we should figure out whether we want to pull it off consent items, and then we'll have a more detailed discussion about that.
Oh, sure.
Okay? And then, you can come back up with more detail when we have that discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
If we decide to. Are there -- does anyone on the commission need to ask staff questions in order to be able to decide consent?
I think it sounds like we should just -- if there's concerns, we should pull it off consent and then go through the regular process for it.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Do I have to make a motion?
Oh, no.
Do I need to make a motion to do that? Okay. So, I'll make a motion to pull 161 Lansdale, application 1334, off consent for full discussion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, we will discuss 161 Lansdale Avenue. And we'll start with a staff report. We'll ask staff questions, then we can open it up again.
All right. In 2005, the commission approved a use permit and parking variance to legalize an unpermitted garage conversion and basement living space conversion that these owners did not do. It was there when they bought the house. And it was approved -- discretionary permits were approved subject to the applicant restoring a covered parking space on the site to comply with the code. So, the current project encompasses a remodel in addition to an existing single-family residence with two tandem parking spaces. The covered parking space was never built. The project will increase the 1,955 square foot house by 698 square feet to 2,653 square feet. The project will not increase the number of bedrooms beyond the three that exist now. The project requires the approval of the following discretionary permits. It requires a use permit because the parcel's only 37 feet wide, and the code requires that the parcel be 60 feet wide to comply with the code. And the code says that if you have any kind of a substandard parcel, any kind of addition or improvement requires the approval of a use permit from the Planning Commission. The proposed project complies with required setbacks, height limit, lot coverage limit, and floor area ratio regulations. And we've reviewed the Marin County tax assessor's records for other homes in the area on similar-sized lots and smaller lots and larger lots. And what we discovered is that the largest house in the area is 2,691 square feet in size on a 7,695 square foot site. So, this project site is 7,260 square feet, and the proposed residence is 2,653 square feet. So, the project will not result in a residence that's out of character with the neighborhood or out of scale with the project site. The project also requires parking variance because the applicants have had an arborist report on the redwood tree that's closest to their driveway. And the arborist has indicated that a structure there, and if they were to build a structure there to comply with the covered parking requirements, it could impact the continued health of that tree. So, we're recommending that the application be approved, subject to the findings in the staff -- based on the findings contained in the staff report, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report.
Are there any questions from commissioners of staff?
One question, and that is, the applicant or owner shall defend and demify, et cetera, the town of Fairfax, and I was wondering if insurance was required by the owner for that? That's part 10.
You know, we require that the contractor have insurance when they're under construction, but we don't require any kind of insurance going forward. So, at least, we haven't in the past.
Okay.
Yeah, well, Jim was pointing out, if they ever have to cut open the road or anything, we do require a bond in that case.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything --
Yeah, that's what -- that was with the building permit during construction.
Is there anything unique or different about this particular project in terms of some of the construction timeline, hours of operation, noise remediation or mitigation for impact on that? Is there something different about this project, or could you might maybe go over what our standard requirements are?
Yeah, there's nothing unique about it. It's a flat lot. There's no unusual topography. It's not next to a creek. They are subject to our noise ordinance, which is in the process of being changed. So, the hours are going to -- well, if the council does what we've recommended, the hours will be shortened. But no, we don't have an ordinance in place right now that limits the amount of time a construction project can take. You did have a project before you at your last meeting where you did put conditions on it to limit, because it had been dragging on for two years. They had been building for over two years.
Can I just reiterate one thing about the noise ordinance changes that are in place? As you recall, we worked hard on the leaf blower, power tools. Last council meeting, they had the first reading adjusting those hours, and they'll have the second reading on November 6. And then, that ordinance change will go into effect 30 days after November 6 on December 6. So, once again, for the benefit of the public, or for you as a neighbor, construction using power tools and/or leaf blowers is going to be reduced two hours during the week. It can go till eight now during the week. It'll stop at six. And on the weekend likewise, it was allowed to go to eight previously, and it'll only be allowed to go till four. So, there's some relief from the noise of equipment during construction or for maintenance activities.
So, I would be curious to hear the kind of your take on this, why you put it on consent? Because I think staff has lots of experience with these, and so, it's always good to hear your take. And then, is it true that the way it's worded here, the new noise ordinance would apply to this when construction starts? Or does the current noise ordinance that's in place today when we approve this?
I don't believe they're going to be able to get their permit processed, but that's a good question.
So, it's when the building permit is pulled is when they have to --
I think they're subject to it no matter what.
I think it'll be -- they'll be subject to it on December 6.
So, any work that starts after December 6?
Right.
So, it'll implement as pulled after December 6?
Even if it's pulled before, they're still subject to the new regulations as of when it goes into effect.
Sorry about that.
And there's nothing unique -- I mean, there's nothing unusual about this project. It actually is unusual in the fact that it complies with setbacks and it meets the height regulations. The parking, the substandard parking, it's -- they have the required number of parking spaces. It's just that they're in the side yard setback, and they're in tandem. So, they're -- the only relief they're asking for is to not build the covered spot.
There. You're back? There. Yeah, it's back. I got it. There you go. Fixed it.
And I think that's important. The use permit, because of the width of the lot, is almost any -- every lot that has this width would have to have a use permit. But as you said, the other variants, there's no other -- besides the parking, there's no other variances that are being asked for as part of this. So, thanks.
Is there any past work done by this applicant that's taken a longer duration than the normal, or is this the first?
You know, I didn't check on that, but they did do some work on the house, and we didn't receive complaints. But this is a large addition. It's two stories. So, you might ask the applicant if they have any estimates from their contractor of how long they thought it might take.
Any other questions for staff, or should we bring up the applicant? Okay. Let's go ahead and bring up the applicant and let us know a little bit about your project and --
My name is Michael Schroeder. This is my wife, Elizabeth Schroeder. And this is Jessica Fairchild, our architect. We live at 161 Lansdale Avenue in Fairfax, the place where the permit is -- remodel would be. We moved in nine years ago, almost to the day. And at the time, my wife was pregnant. We had a new baby soon after. And the boys have been basically sharing a room, and we wanted to be able to give them their own rooms. They're nine and -- eight and 11 now. And this is what we've -- how we're expanding the house to expand our -- deal with our family as we are growing. When we originally did some work on the house with the permits, the unfinished permit was a permit to do two things. One, change a dangerous spiral staircase to a safer one for our children, and do a -- put a garage in front of the house. We started -- we got the stairway done first, the garage. We started looking at the amount that it would cost to do that as designed, and it was too expensive for us at the time. Between that time and now, we've noticed that the tree that was right at the corner of where the garage would be has grown substantially, the redwood tree, and has started to buckle the pavers. And it's very obvious that it is -- it's still growing like that, and that's why we got the arborist to look at that. You want to talk about -- Jessica, you want to talk about that?
So, basically, the design of the addition is to keep the scale in scale with the original house, which is sort of craftsman style, not to add a, you know, huge thing on the back, but basically, to keep it in keeping with that. We wanted to minimize the impacts. We're not going over the allowable lot coverage or square footage or height. It's basically, the idea is to do a fairly modest addition, but to get them the square footage that they need, and to keep the building looking basically the way it is in terms of the feel of it and the aesthetics of it.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. I didn't see anything for lighting at the back area. What kind of plans do you have for lighting?
Basically, there's code requirements for lighting at any exterior door, so we would have to do lighting at any doorway. Otherwise, the idea is to keep the lighting low level. There's some stairs that are going down, and what we've talked about doing is doing on the side that is facing -- that's closest to the neighbor's house, it's more of a solid as opposed to open rail, and to actually do step lights in that that would just shine onto the steps as opposed to anything big.
Okay.
I think, you know, they really appreciate their backyard, and they don't want to, you know, take out -- we're taking out as few trees. There's one tree that we're going to have to take out, but the idea is to keep everything pretty much as is as much as possible.
Okay.
To answer the question about timing, you know, we're going to finish the plans and put it out to bid to contractors. You know, we don't know how long it's going to take. We want to get it done as soon as we can, you know, so.
We have two small children, so it's a pretty major project, and we're going to have to, at some point, move out of the house. It'd be quite disruptive, and our plan is to really minimize the time that it's going to take. I mean, we don't want a long, drawn-out project, as you know, probably going to be very chaotic. And we want to, you know, keep our family as -- and our neighbors as minimally impacted as possible.
Any other questions, or should we open it up? Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we will open it up to the public to come up, and you've got three minutes to give us more detail. Come on up. Name and address again, just so we --
Sure. Judy Bersalieri, 159 Lansdale. The first concern I have is the duration of construction. When we had gone over to talk to them, which was very gracious of them to have my daughter and I go and look at the plans and talk to the architect. And Liz and Mike are wonderful neighbors. I support what they're doing. It's just some concerns that I have that I want you to hear and document and be aware of. The duration of the construction, I wrote, can the duration of the construction be limited to a certain amount of time? The building timeline, when I was at their home, was, they had stated, was projected for nine months of construction. And I would like the record to reflect this in the event that the work continues beyond that scope. And that's basically what I want to say about that. The second was the parking and deliveries. We live on Lansdale. It is tough at times, not only with the Good Earth opening up and a lot of the employees at First parking there, but also the bikers that come in on the weekends, and also, when the residents of Lansdale are home on weekends, there's no parking during the week. There's hardly any parking. So, I just want to -- my concern is about the construction-related vehicles and the deliveries that shall be situated off the travel lane of the public right-of-way. I just want to reiterate how parking along Lansdale is extremely difficult for everybody. It seems that everybody has, you know, two cars and are in and out all day with their children and going to school and coming back and not finding parking as it is. So, it is a challenge. And I ask that all construction vehicles and/or equipment staging areas respect this condition and the neighbors' parking needs. My third is protection measures during the construction. I am right next door. I have a big backyard. I'm in it all the time with my grandchildren. I would ask that my property, it could be insured protective measures are put into place to prevent construction debris from accumulating or causing damage or coming in to my backyard. I spend a lot of time, like I said. It's adjacent to where the construction will take place. I have a vegetable garden. I have young grandchildren, four and one year, and I want to be confident that during the construction, we are safeguarded. The fourth is trees, and I talked to Liz about this. And there are some trees there, and they're privates, but they're a great screen, and they're great protection that I feel that if it can possibly be worked out that during the building of the house, framing, I should say, that these trees can stay there as best as they can instead of replanting and spending more money to get a screen put up. What's there, I feel, is perfectly fine, and we talked about it. So, yeah, we had a good talk when we went over to their house. So, I'm, like I said, I'm very supportive, but I do have these concerns, and that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will bring it up -- back up to the commission for discussion and action.
Madam Chair, can I point out one thing regarding the trees?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the applicants will still have to go through a tree permit, a tree removal permit process. So, no matter what happens here tonight, there's one more stop for the applicant in terms of removing the trees. So, you should keep abreast of things with regards to getting permits to removing the trees, because there'll be another stop and opportunity for you all to discuss the disposition of the trees.
Any other conversation? It sounds like it's more around discussing conditions and stuff from who we've heard, so.
Yeah. I think what's important is, and we have two new commission members as well, so the conditions that we have are generally standard, and we often will add a condition that kind of ties into some of the other concerns or questions that are brought up. And what I heard is, you know, concern around condition four, which is the construction-related vehicles. Earlier, we discussed the noise ordinance, and I don't know that that's specifically called out as a recommendation, but any permit is required to comply with the town's noise ordinance. And then, as Neil mentioned, we do have -- we haven't issued conditions in terms of duration of work, but often, it's expected to be six months or less. So, the fact that the neighbor was talking about nine months and feeling like that's a reasonable time period seems reasonable. I don't know that I would feel that we need to add that as a condition. But I think if it was, you know, they were proposing two years, then we'd have a discussion. But nine months, I think the expectation of the town is six months to a year is pretty normal for most work like this. So, I wouldn't want to sort of limit it, but what I heard is making sure that at least there was a discussion, and it's on the record. And if it does go a year, and the neighbor brings this forward, at least, it's on the record, and we have it to discuss later on. But I think, and, you know, it's really the town and the building official that is enforcing the construction, equipment, vehicles interfering. And I don't know if there's really any -- this is a standard condition that we've had on there, and I don't know that there's any expectation or any additional language that you might recommend.
Well, I just --
Based on experience.
The fact that they're moving out, their driveway will be empty.
Part of it.
So, that's one place where delivery -- deliveries can occur. I wouldn't expect, right, anyone else to be using the driveway but either the owner or the contractor.
Right. And I think what I was hearing is a concern that if you have four or five different workers, and they all drive their own car, that that does have an effect on the neighborhood parking. And of all places, this is one of the most central locations for parking. I know Lansdale is a problem for parking, but there's actually a lot of -- even the parkade would be accessible from that point.
Past commissions have actually put the condition on that the contractor carpool. And, you know, we don't go out and enforce it, but if it became a problem, we could enforce it.
So, we could say contractor shall minimize number of construction --
Vehicles.
Vehicles associated with the project, and they can figure out how to carpool. So, that might be something.
And since it's a use permit, it can be revisited if there is a problem.
And do you -- have you ever had any standard language for just acknowledging mitigation of construction debris in another -- I mean, it's kind of a given that they will do it. And I'm looking at the language on number six about the roadway shall be kept clean by watering down, free of dust or gravel. I was -- is there any other -- I mean, I know that's kind of a given that that's kind of the responsibility.
Yeah, we've never included a condition to that effect, and I don't know that it's been a problem, flying debris. We've had problems with contractors taking stuff away and dumping it far away from the site, but we haven't really had a problem with debris being deposited immediately in the construction area.
But given the meeting we had last time, we actually did come up with -- it wasn't a prescriptive condition like how you do it, but we said the contractor shall minimize, you know, potential --
Noise.
And what I'm hearing is, noise is one thing. I'm not hearing noise is the problem. It's really just the potential for debris, which is, I would say, quite unusual, but I think minimize potential for debris crossing the, you know.
And I think you actually -- I think you used the term airborne particulates with that case, too.
It's sort of neighboring debris externalities into the abutting properties. There's not a problem with putting language into that effect.
It's a minimize. It's not a prescriptive. It's a general guidance. It's not saying how it shall be done necessarily. I was hearing more of the pieces of drywall being tossed over the fence, but I don't think that's -- if that happened, there'd be other remedies as well.
Well, there is also, in favor of this application, a condition here that number six, that roadways will be kept clean and dust-free watering down will occur if necessary. So, that'll kind of keep dust down, and that's a consideration which is good to have in there.
Yeah. So, let's -- if anybody has any language for the minimizing and in general, because I do think it's a -- often, we hear it often as a concern of the neighbors, and while it seems like, yes, of course, they're going to do that, if there is some language that could be added as a standard thing that you just stick in everywhere to make neighbors feel comfortable, even though we all kind of take it as a given, articulating, I think, might be really helpful for people.
Yeah. If the commission votes for us to add that to our standard condition list, we can definitely do that.
That way, we don't have to reconstruct it every time it comes up. So, who would like to try and reconstruct it this time? Brandon?
I mean, I'm looking at -- I agree, item six is the place to put it. I think just, it's focused on roadways, but I think a new sentence could be added that contractor shall minimize to the greatest degree possible potential construction-related effects on adjacent properties. And I know that's broad, but I think if we're thinking about long-term, it's a statement that if there is a complaint, it sort of gives the building and planning folks an ability to respond.
That's great.
Push the button.
If I might say, construction contractor shall use his best efforts to minimize -- that's kind of a legal term of art, which is best efforts.
So, that would be contractor shall use best efforts to minimize potential constructed-related impacts on adjacent properties. And then, I had had for the parking, that contractor shall use best efforts to minimize the number of project-related vehicles parking in the neighborhood? Would that work for the parking?
Yeah. Or parking and affecting adjacent properties. I think we would want them to use the property they're working on, but minimize the effects on the -- on neighborhood parking and adjacent properties.
Minimize the number of project-related vehicles using -- minimize the parking effects? Changes the sentence construction. Help me.
I don't know if best efforts works there, though.
Okay.
Because you either park the car there, or you don't. Kind of best efforts is a little grayer, and it's sort of a daily thing.
So, they just shall. Minimize the number of project-related vehicles accessing and parking.
Well, I can access it. It sounds like it's parking.
Yeah.
Parking adjacent to blah, blah, blah.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, those would be two additional conditions that we would put in, and while we're at it, maybe create standard. So, other than that.
And I think for the record, that based on, you know, the description from staff, the noise ordinance that is in place at the time the building permit is pulled is the noise ordinance that would be. I mean, it seems, I don't even know if that's the right --
I think it's the noise ordinance.
We're not saying it. I think it's just making sure that that's sort of -- the noise ordinance is bound to change.
On the chance that they get their permit early, we want them to be subject to whatever is in place and not the old noise ordinance.
Isn't that true? I mean, if a law is passed, you are now subject to that law. If the drinking age gets changed, you are now subject to that law, even if you quit before, right?
Yeah. If you did something that changed their entitlements, like let's say you changed the setback requirement all of a sudden. the setback requirement all of a sudden, they wouldn't be subject to it because they obtained your decision tonight, but something like the noise ordinance for day-to-day operations, they're still subject to the new regulations.
So, there's no other questions or changes, we can take action.
So, if we make a motion with amendments, do you feel comfortable with the amendments or do we need to recite them for you? Okay. All right. So, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve application thirteen thirty-four for one sixty-one Lansdale with the conditions as amended.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Fantastic, okay, so, the, um...
There is a ten-day...
There is a ten-day appeal period with a five hundred dollar fee for appealing, otherwise, and, but as of now, we've passed it, so thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. All right, let's continue to move right along to item number two, seven twenty Center Boulevard, application thirteen thirty-three.
Madam Chair, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our new town intern, Corwin Bell, who's local, lives right near Town Hall, which is very convenient, a recent graduate of UC Berkeley's Urban Studies Program, a future applicant for the Graduate Program there in Planning, as well as perhaps some other campuses, unless I can talk him out of it and make sure he goes to Berkeley.
That would be the Jim Moore Scholarship, is that right?
And Arajit, if you're watching, you have a good successor here, he's watching in Berkeley right now, our last intern for those that don't know. So, it's just a real delight to have Corwin here. He's, he's signed up for three hundred and twenty hours, and we are actually covering a stipend for him, which is a first also, out of my discretionary funds. And Corwin has sort of jumped in on this application to help both the Good Earth and the town, which have worked in concert, to get this little piece of mediating or mitigating noise impacts at the Good Earth site rolling. So, he's going to give the report tonight and probably include this in his resume for grad school, so here we go.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to start this out by saying that I apologize, there are a few typos, as it is my first staff report. For starters, in the site plan, yeah, in the site plan, there's a slight issue of basically the, the applicant's requested fence extension length of thirty-one feet, and then our recommendation for an additional two panels, that dimension there should be seventeen feet, but the total is forty-six feet, six inches. So, I apologize for that. Basically, the applicant is seeking to extend the existing fence that screens the loading dock. And so, we assessed an eight-foot-tall fence, that would be thirty-one feet long is what the applicant is requesting. We also assessed the impacts for a forty, roughly forty-seven-foot-long fence. And after passing it on to the police department and the fire department, we did not receive any issues from either of them. And they do require a fence height variance, because it is in the central commercial. And, yes, so it would have to be taller than the allowed six feet to screen for noise as a, as a noise mitigation measure. So, if there are any questions about this agenda item, I'll accept them now.
Can I just clarify one thing? In the commercial area, just for the public that's watching, all fences require a permit, even six-foot fences require a permit, unlike in the residential area when you're, what, four feet back from the front of the property. You're allowed four feet and you have to get a variance for six feet in the front of the property. Second, the applicants, the Good Own, the Good Earth owners, are submitting this application in an effort to further mitigate sound impacts, particularly up in the Willow direction. And you'll hear from the applicant, I believe, in a moment, that they're actually willing to go beyond just the wooden fence, if it will help further with perhaps hanging some padding material on the parking lot side. We're optimistic that since one of the persons up in Willow that's a very, has a very sensitive, what we call, he's a sensitive receptor, if you will, that this will help mitigate the direct line of sight from the operations at the loading dock to his residence. Of course, won't know until a few months down the road when this is implemented. Just for the record also, we talked about a fence in this location with the applicant. We never talked about a sound wall. If you remember way back in the original mitigations of the Good Earth market, there had been some discussion about sound wall along Pastory, and I don't think anybody has any ideas about going that direction now. So, anyway, thank you. And also, Corwin did the photo montage with his IT skills, which is very helpful to model the extension. And when you do hear from the applicant, you can ask whether they're willing to go that extra two panels, if you will, further along there. And again, as Corwin mentioned, the police, who, the police and fire have no problem, and we're comfortable that there's no interruption of the line of sight for those cars turning right off of Pastory onto Sir Francis Drake. Thank you.
So, it, it appears from the, on page two, it actually is that, and at nine feet six, there could be effects. So, there's, what's being proposed is an eight-foot-high fence, so there's actually an extra foot and a half that if there was some thought that that might actually have a benefit in terms of sound, that would be possible. Was there any discussion about a taller fence for, if it's really about sound versus just visual screening?
Yeah, it's more to do with sound. So, given that the existing fence, at that point where the, the fence extension would begin, is nine feet, six inches tall, we figured that if the fence extension was the same height, the visual impact wouldn't be traumatic. And in terms of being able to screen the sound, it would probably have more of a noise mitigating effect than if it were shorter, so taller.
So, but, but what I'm getting at is that the proposed height could be increased to nine foot, six inches without causing a vehicular effect. So, was there discussion about actually making, having the fence be nine foot six rather than eight feet to address some of the concerns about sound?
We talked about it, and we're fine with it if you want to go that direction. And, you know, you might want to ask the applicant if he's fine with it, too. There was a certain aesthetic value to stepping it down, but I think your point's well taken on further mitigation.
Well, and it could be a down-the-road thing if that's necessary. And then, when there's discussion that you've had with the applicant about the possibility of adding something to make it more sound-mitigating, would that be for the new fence or would that be for the entirety of the fenced section all the way into where the current fence is?
You'd have to ask them. I would say at least up to the loading dock, step up. I think most of the, you can hear from the neighborhood also to help gauge that. We didn't make it a prescriptive piece of this application, it was volunteered by the Good Earth folks as, you know, going the next step if this doesn't help enough, but you can entertain that with them also.
And was the two-panel extension the maximum that you could do without impacting the visual? How did you pick the two-panel extension?
We didn't exhaust it out to the end to find out where that, where that point was. We just took it, two extra panels, based on sort of the operations and what are going on, that there's also, you know, a second benefit of sort of screening all the stuff that's going on from Sir Francis Drake, because there's a need for their bins and whatnot that are going in along that area.
One final question. Are there any complaints about the noises coming out of the generator boxes that are behind the sign?
Not to my knowledge.
The, those big electrical boxes, okay.
Any other questions or should we bring up the applicant? Okay, let's go ahead and bring up the applicant.
Hi, you all. My name's Al Baylak from Good Earth. Thank you for everything you guys do, for this town, too, new and old members, I see, a couple of new faces. This, this was a, it was an idea that just occurred to us that it would help by putting a fence there, keeping the noise from going up the hill. You know, I think both the height, the height limit was really just in, from an aesthetic point of view, stepping it down and making it make sense aesthetically. If there's consensus on making it higher, I didn't even, it didn't even occur to me because I thought maybe it would be a variance or something more difficult to get through doing it that way, but we're certainly open to it. The, the additional material that we would put on the inside part of the fence to absorb any noise, any and all noise that happens near the dock there, is also, we're also willing to do that, too. I think we put the fence up first, we could have that done from, once we get the permit, in a week, so I don't think it's going to be a couple of months, but I'd look to fast-track it with our contractor. And, and then what could take some time is some back and forth with Willow, whether they're, you know, if there's a sense, the sensibilities are that putting, putting some kind of material, sound absorption material on the inside of the fence would work or not, or would help or not, but totally willing to do that. I forget that the other question that came up, is there one more?
I think they were talking about the, yeah, forty-six.
Oh, how long, yeah. I actually rethought, maybe just two sections from where the, the fence stops now, going two more eight-foot sections. I, I agree with the idea that we're actually going four eight-foot sections out, thirty-two feet, and I think that's great. So, I, do we go further? I don't know if there's a point to it. No, there is no noise coming out of that corner. That's, you know, there's PG&E and AT&amp;T under the ground there, and there's no, no noise to absorb or deflect from that arena. And it's beyond the thirty-two-foot point, it becomes moot in terms of the dock noise going up the hill. I mean, you would have to go down along the fence and make a left-hand turn up the hill, so I don't think extending the fence any longer is justified.
So, just, so I'm clear, there's a fence, and I think you're looking at it from one perspective. I drive by and I see all the recycling and garbage bins.
It's a good...
And actually, it appears that some of those are, would be affected by going forty-seven feet versus thirty-two feet. It seems like they're lined up almost all the way to where the electrical boxes are.
Well, we're, it's pretty close, you know, and if it makes, you know, I think those can stop where the, the agency equipment starts. You know, where the PG&E transformer is and, and other boxes in the ground. Right where that's, right where that equipment starts, we have a bike rack perpendicular to it. And, Corwin, thank you very much for your work, too, by the way. How far do we, how close do we come to that piece of equipment with the end of the fence?
Are you asking for the thirty-one-foot extension or the recommended longer extension?
Yeah, we're applying for thirty-two feet extension. So, how far at that endpoint is it to the...
Probably, if you look at Exhibit D, that's a pretty good, it's the view from across Sir Francis Drake, and that basically shows that it would be probably another thirty feet, almost, almost the same distance from the end of the extension to, to, is a better...
And there's no depiction of a forty-seven foot, but if you added, it seems like it would take it to the next grouping of trees.
Yeah, probably.
That sixteen feet or maybe a little bit beyond, maybe.
Yeah, it, in my head, thirty-two feet's really far. It looks like there's fifty feet there, so...
And for the, for the record, Al's correct. He started with two panels, I pushed it to four, and then we did Mission Creep to six, so.
Yeah, and it, and I, I won't leave, you know, we are always, we're concerned about costs, we're more concerned about operating costs and those kinds of costs that happen forever. There is less concern on spending money to make this right. One-time monies is easier to come by. So, I have total willingness to extend it further, if that's the consensus, especially from an aesthetic standpoint. I understand, I mean, that could bring some value, and I, you know, there, there's so much recycling going on in that business, and our requirement to have that many bins from Ren Sanitary is, it just is that. And where do you put so many bins? We have, we have almost as many bins up on the dock at any given time as we do down below from them.
Any other questions of the applicant before we let him have a seat and bring the public?
Well, one question is, what is the material that you could apply to the inside of the fence that would limit noise?
There, there's a variety of materials. You know, essentially, they're soft, right? They're absorption. You see, you can see it in, you see it in sound rooms, there's blankets, you know, thermal blanketine that can be hung off the fence. There's, there's actually even material with the, there's actually fence material with the stuff built into it, absorption materials built into it. It's the most expensive part of this, of the project when we get there. I don't, you know, what specifically is it? I don't have that at my fingertips here.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know about, I mean, I know inside buildings, the soft-absorbent stuff inside buildings, because you want it to absorb, not bounce around inside of the building, but I'm wondering, in the outside world, is a solid, hard fence just bouncing the sound back more or less effective than absorbing sound?
Yeah, so we would be concerned with it bouncing off the fence, then reverberating back off the, the building and up to the neighborhood. So, I think that's why you would apply a softer material on the fence and try to absorb as much as you can at that point.
And for staff, is there any way of approving this with a future revisit on adding sound absorption? Or how would we, would we have to make that decision now to say you have to do it? Or what's, what would be the step to do some sort of, put the fence in first, see how it goes, and then...
Yeah, this is, we purposely didn't want to make this thou shalt. This is, you know, this is an effort by the Good Earth team to help mitigate the noise traveling up the hill, and they're sincerely doing this. So, we want to work with them collaboratively, and that's what we've done with this application. They came up with the idea, we slipstreamed the whole process to get us here right now, and the same night that we're going to be discussing the next item. And so, we want to work with them, and, you know, we can always revisit issues in the future if we need to, we can bring them up.
In other words, you don't necessarily, given that he's open to it, if it becomes a problem, it sounds like it would naturally happen, and if there was some friction, then we could just bring it back to...
I don't think we have to regulate this one, we're both, we're all walking in the same direction.
Yeah.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, oh, sorry, one more question before we bring the public? Okay. Let's go ahead and have public comment before we bring it back to the commission. So, if anybody would like to speak on this particular item, please come up to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for any further discussion and action.
So, I think there's some advantages and some disadvantages with the fence. I think there's, the advantages outweigh the disadvantages. I agree with the idea of stepping it down, I don't have a problem with that. I, I would ask staff if it is advisable to say up to nine foot six in case down the road there's a need to raise it. We've already sort of covered that, and if that's really the visual of the safety metric that we need to follow, I'm comfortable with eight feet, but, you know, if down the road we need to revisit it, maybe that's an administrative action that can be taken. In terms of the sound, I think the, the first thirty feet, thirty-two feet is probably a sound effect. I think the next sixteen feet is more of a visual, and I would be comfortable having that actually stepped down more. You know, I don't, I don't see that as, it sounds like that's not really affecting sound, but it could be a screen for all of the bins of recycling, as well as the bales of recycling. The other thing that I think is, and for that perspective, that one could be lower, that last sixteen feet could be, you know, lower, because it's really not affecting sound, it doesn't appear to be at least. And in the same thing, not that we're prescribing it, but I think if there was going to be an investment made in the... an investment made in the panels, or the sound panels, that having some distribution on the dock as well as adjacent to the dock, but maybe not even the entire length, you know, those would be things that you need to look at. And you could even look at on the building, I mean, if we're talking about sound absorption down the road. But I think in terms of what's, what the application is, I think we take what staff has recommended, which is a 40, 47 or 48-foot fence, if we want to keep them at even panels. Not to exceed 9'6" for the first 32 feet, and then I think that last 16 feet could be a lot lower. And it sounds like the recommendation from staff is really not to, not to try to prescribe any specific buffering at this point, which I wouldn't want to weigh into how much is necessary or what standard needs to be met, and I don't know enough about it.
Okay. Any other comments? I, I would go with the longer, I would recommend going with the longer thing and just using the language "up to 9'6" and let them figure out the logistics of the stepping. That's my opinion, so.
I agree. I think this is a little bit a matter of experimentation, and certainly the lengthening the fence is a great idea. And the height, 9'6", I kind of like that height better, but let's just let it float and see how it goes and revisit it.
What is the material that's proposed? I'm not, I want to, is that, extending the wood? Okay. I'd like to give, see if we can give some latitude into what that material would be, and I'd like to, so that we can, the applicant would be able to choose the best material that could work for sound purposes. And I think it would be beneficial if they could get some type of recommendation from an acoustical expert, because it sounds like we're kind of guessing as to what it is. And I think it would be a good investment to maybe talk to a professional who could provide some real possible solutions.
Does the current proposal dictate what, that it shall be the same construction as the other one, or does it not say anything, so it leaves it open? Is there anywhere here where we'd have to change it? It leaves it open? Okay. Any other opinions?
I have a question about security. Do you have cameras in this location looking east?
We do. It's limited. Sorry, I'll. It's in a direction. We, we have one camera right above the trash compactor, which is on the southeast corner of the dock. So it's, it's looking out to the dock area where the trucks would pull up to the back of the dock. The, how far it goes, or the graininess, the further you get away from the dock is, it's real.
Okay, so it would include views out as far as maybe the transformer we're looking at in this picture?
Yeah, yeah, it does. It goes all the way. You could, you could see the back of the, you can see a truck leaving the parking lot, technically, from the exit there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other opinions before we move forward to action?
I guess my concern is putting this sort of piecemeal cost onto the applicant. Do 8 feet now, maybe 9'6" later, start at 31, go to 46. Just looking at the marginal cost of construction and things, it just makes sense to do the bigger scheme now than piecemeal and making greater costs later. Otherwise, I err on the longer side as well, both in terms of aesthetics, and I think some of the concerns and the noises in the community, you know, I'm just thinking that longer distance and looking at how the dock comes, that some of that sound might still be at that 46-inch, 48-inch, or 46-foot extension area. And then just keeping in the amount of waste, I mean, we've got the 75% waste reduction that the state's moving us to by 2020, and then we're going to get more aggressive that point out. So more bins after 2020.
And the last thing I think is important, if, for that last section, the reason I think it's really about just a visual screen and low, the other reason to keep it low is because the last thing I want is for a lot of people to start using the backside of that fence, because it is kind of a quiet retreat. Now, yes, it's right next to the road, but, you know, so in some cases, at least that section being low kind of makes it less attractive to go right around the corner, right behind the fence. But I do think that, you know, thus far, and having seen it, that fence there for almost two years, you know, there's not been a lot of damage. But people do go hang out and things like that. So I think just having a lower fence at that, kind of where it's most accessible, makes it more visual, visible, and harder to sort of hide behind.
Do you want to put that as part of the recommended action, that it's, rather than saying that the staff recommends a fence extension up to 9'6" in height and 46 1/2 feet long be constructed, which gives them the flexibility to make it as high and step it as needed? That you want to prescribe where it ought to be stepped?
Well, I don't know if we want to prescribe it. I think making that clear through this, I don't, whether we need to put it in, the expectation is it's 9'6" for 47 feet, or 48 feet. I think the, it's, whether it's up to or just 9'6" for that 32 feet, and then lower for visual screening only for the last 16 feet. Maybe that's a way of.
Can you help with the language for that?
Let me see if I hear you. You're in favor of what is, what is shown here is 46'6", give or take, right?
No, what's shown, I'm looking at Exhibit D, just because it's.
Look at the fold-out. Look at the ledger page.
The other exhibits, there's some exhibits that are 31 feet and some exhibits that are 47 feet. So we need to be sure what it is that we're approving.
Yes, if we're looking at Exhibit E.
The four panels, yes, the four panels are the 31 feet, okay? And then the two extra panels take the whole range out to 46'6". If I heard you correctly, your game for the first four panels that are approximately 31 feet to be allowed up to 9'6". And then the next two panels, which you favor, you would like them to step down to no higher than 6 feet.
Maybe that's, that's.
Great.
Because I think it's less about sound, it's more about just a screen.
So the last.
So that would be the recommended amendment to the language that we could approve, if anyone would like to make a motion to do so. So if anyone would like to go forward.
There we go.
She often always asks, you know, say that she's ready to entertain a motion.
I meant, I'm ready to entertain a motion. All right.
I make a motion for 720 Center Boulevard, approval of the fence variance, given the initial 31-foot extension up to a height of 9'6" and the additional length out to 47 to 48 feet?
46.
46, with a height of up to 6 foot.
Should we say in a, in a material to be determined?
With material to be determined.
Based on review by the.
Based on review by staff.
Do you want to say by an acoustical?
Actually, in concert with the applicant. We'll just work in concert with the applicant.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Is that language added? The "in concert" language should be added to the motion, then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. The application passes. There's a 10-day appeal period with a $500 fee. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to the next one.
Can I ask a question, staff?
Sure.
So in sort of other projects or future projects, if we think there might be an impact, such as this, a noise, would an impact fee payable to the town be acceptable where that could be used maybe up on, for example, in this case, up on the Willow property line to help put a screen to buffer noise coming in from the project? It's been done in other communities. Would that be something that we could do here?
How did the other communities come to the determination that there might be that impact? I mean, was it just the, just the planning commission thinking that it might happen, or did they have members of the community saying, "We think this is going to have"? Do you recall?
From previous properties, so say a strip development, and we've seen it come in from some, so.
I think, I think we'd have to run that by our attorney, because conditions, we have to have a nexus with the project, and if we don't have any real evidence that the impact's going to occur, it might be difficult. But, but we can ask.
Could we bring that back?
Can I suggest we visit that at, under Commissioner Comments and Requests?
Great.
And then we can come, you can give us your request, and we can come back with some information and do some data mining.
Thanks. Okay, let's have the staff report on item number 3720 Center Boulevard. Application 1310.
All right. So I'm going to try and be succinct. You have the staff report. The public has access to it on the town's website. It's also been at the public, in the public packet at the counter. It's also out in the front of the lobby of this building tonight. We have two new commissioners, so I want to be very careful in how I reiterate where we're at tonight. In the first year that the Good Earth was operating, the owner has admitted that the enforcement of the trucks, the limited number of trucks before 7:00 in the morning got away from him. It, you know, it's a big operation, moving from 8,000 square feet to, what, 24,000 square feet. I've learned a lot in the last six months since you last met here in April to entertain the number of trucks coming in the morning and the impacts from those trucks. So we're really talking about from last April, when you all heard this, going forward. There's no dispute that things got out of hand. In fact, it was unfortunate, because it created a lot of sort of bad vibes. And I think that, that, those bad vibes are hard to put to rest. And so I'm just going to focus going forward, and what's happened in the last six months. And your packet, I'm sorry, the staff report starts out by articulating what the agreement were, was, and again, this came out of a community meeting in the 11th hour, and it was agreed to by all parties, perhaps under a lot of pressure to the applicant to get his business up and going, granted, was that they would be allowed one 60-foot truck in the 5 o'clock hour and two 45-foot trucks in the 6 o'clock hour. So we met here in April. We came up with, you deferred acting on this. If you recall, staff had taken a position. The applicant had actually requested for relaxation of those restrictions on the number of trucks before 7:00, and the neighbors were actually asking for the elimination of the 5 o'clock truck, but were willing to loosen the restrictions of after 6 o'clock. You decided to continue this six months, and here we are tonight. So, and you directed us to meet and to try to mediate a resolution between the neighbors and the Good Earth principals, the owners. So we did that. We met, and we sat down together in this room on June 12th, and we hammered out what was a three-step process. First, on the heels of Commissioner Ketchum's statement at the Planning Commission meeting in April, that, you know, what happened to compliance, because we had heard a lot of discussion about how hard it is to regulate the trucks, and you get rogue truckers, and you've got 24 pallets and whatnot. So we sort of started with that as a baseline. That was the start, is let's get compliance. We've heard, we heard at that date, the challenges up to that point. So in our sit-down on June 12th, we agreed with compliance, getting to the point of compliance. Next was, because the Good Earth wanted to improve its relationship with the neighbors, and the neighbors obviously wanted that, and the, and the Good Earth wanted relaxation of the restrictions on those only three trucks before 7:00, we moved into improvement to reduce or eliminate the noise from the three trucks before 7:00. And then finally, out of that group meeting on June 12th, if the Good Earth was successful in sort of making those three trucks go away in the morning and sort of proving that it can be operated in a, in a, in a way that's not impacting the neighborhood negatively, that they would then get a reward. That if they achieved compliance and succeeded in reducing or eliminating noise from the three early trucks before 7:00, then the neighbors would agree to allow unlimited number of truck deliveries after 6:00 with the one truck in the 5 o'clock hour continuing on. That was sort of the three-step, mutually-agreed, win-win, targeted approach. Subsequent to that meeting on June 12th, we met with the GE, I'm sorry, the Good Earth alone. We met with the main representative of the neighborhood alone. Then we had a follow-up meeting with both parties in August, on August 29th, to sort of a reality check on what had been going on. And then subsequent to that final joint meeting in August 22nd, we've met again and communicated with the neighborhood group via email, which are attached to your staff report. We also met with the GE to talk about the approach on the, on the fence. And so here we are, six months later. Has been, has been acknowledged by Mr. Mellon's, in Mr. Mellon's email, as the representative for the neighborhood group up until recently, anyway, to the Good Earth's credit, and you'll hear from Al in a moment, I believe, he's, I believe, made a good-faith effort to introduce protocols with the truckers that come in. And I've learned a lot about how hard it is to manage truckers, and I've learned the term rogue truckers, and these are kind of mischievous folks that can get going in the morning to get things done. So I've learned a lot about that. But they introduced these protocols, and they also put a point person on the site in the morning, and they erected these sawhorse barricades. And then, as you've just heard, they also have moved forward with applying for the fence to try to help mitigate that noise. So even though the protocols were introduced, you have a point person on the grounds. We have, unfortunately, had some complaints from the neighbors. On two occasions, there have been calls to the police department, and those complaints were responded to, and the officers went to the site and they logged the events. This is a really difficult challenge to sort of get on top of what the facts on the ground are at any given moment at that time in the morning, because staff's usually not here. There's a lag time between the call and the police getting there. There had been discussion between the neighborhood and the Good Earth principals, the owners, about installing a video camera across the street. That never really came to fruition for any number of reasons. We did learn along the way that the Good Earth has a video camera without sound, that security camera on the back dock. And in our most recent discussion with Al and Mark, the owners and principals of the Good Earth, they agreed to try to extend the archiving of that tape from three days to a week, and to make it available to us. So if we get a call, we can go down there, review the tape, and see some empirical evidence as to how many trucks were at the loading dock before 7:00 in the morning. So just to reiterate, we had the meetings, we had two sit-down meetings with all concerned. I've read the attachments, as you have, from Mr. Mellon, from Al of the Good Earth. I think it's, I think that the Good Earth has gotten very close, if not to compliance, very close to compliance. There are, as Al mentioned in his email, there's been one incidence of a rogue driver that they had to straighten around. I think there might have been one other nuanced exception. Of course, with the angst that had been generated from the first year, to people that are frustrated with the pace of this happening, any violation at this point is, is like salt on a wound, if you will. So we're still in a precarious situation of finding a way forward to help the Good Earth function as a thriving business, and for the neighborhood to have its peace in the early morning. So that leads me to the recommendations in the staff report. So that leads me to the recommendations in the staff report. The first, I gave you sort of a, a menu here of choices. The first is to direct the applicant to comply with the allowed number of trucks before seven. I could have said in here, direct the applicant to continue to comply. I didn't say continue to comply because I think you need to hear from the neighbors tonight and burrow in with both sides' explanations of what might have been the exceptions in the last six-month period. But I think both sides should be able to agree that we came together in the spirit of cooperation. We came together and created a plan, this three-step process. And things have been moving in an effort, in a positive direction. Just how complete that compliance is, I'll let the record tonight speak to that. We will, if you so direct us to go in the direction of A, take advantage of the tapes. We are much more sensitive now to the nuances of how it is a challenge to manage it. We're also very sensitive to any exceptions in the routine that aggravate the neighborhood's feeling. We're hoping that this fence will help with the most sensitive-recepting area, which is the, Mr. Mellon and Mr. Franks live on Willow. So we're hoping that this mitigates the direction of sound up the hill, if you will. So we're very comfortable with you directing the applicant to continue in the efforts to comply with the restrictions on the early morning deliveries. Moving on to the other two options here on your menu, they reflect what was being requested six months ago by both sides. And in all candor, even though I put these in as options of recommend, action tonight by staff, our recommendations, in all candor, if you go in either of those directions, there's probably going to be appeal, an appeal from the other party. So I'm going to sort of amend this slightly and say, B and C are problematic because it's going to kick it up the council on appeal probably, and that would be my guess. And council's going to probably do the same thing you did six months ago, try to work to get back to the center. And I think we already have that effort underway, if you will. We are already moving in a positive direction. And then finally, for option D was just, you know, if you, in your wisdom, after hearing the statements tonight by both the operators of the Good Earth, the owners, and also the neighborhood, can come up with other alternatives, we stand ready to move in that direction. You know, I might add that I was fortunate to serve for a couple of years on the planning commission in Sausalito. And so I've sat where you sit. And it's also really fun now to be your staff, having also felt what it's like to be up there. And you know, sometimes the most difficult decisions and the best decisions leave both sides a little wanting. And that's kind of our role, again, here as staff and you all as appointed commissioners, is mitigating the rights of individuals against individuals or individuals against businesses or the whole town, if you will, versus impacts from individual or company activities. So it's not an easy role. As Mr. Mellon's email pointed out kindly to us as staff, we're in a difficult position to try to mediate this. But I can report to you tonight that I think the situation is better. I do think there's been a wake-up in the last six months by the owners of the Good Earth. And I do believe they're moving forward in a forthright manner. And that might upset some people by saying that. And I think we're getting closer to the finish line. And I, I think if you take recommendation A and we implement this fence, I think we'll continue to move in a positive direction. And that would be my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff before we bring up the applicant?
So, appreciate what you said about accepting things that maybe not everybody likes because I got to go back to work today for that reason. Reminds, and if you said it earlier, I apologize. But the current conditions were part of a mitigated neg deck that went through a public review process. That was, there were multiple public hearings associated with that. And at that time, there weren't any changes, comments, anything specific to, I mean, I know it's hard to imagine deliveries until they actually start happening. But was there a sound study that went with that mitigated neg deck? Or this was more just a, I know there was a traffic study, but there wasn't, was there any? I know it goes back a long time. It's been a couple of years.
The initial study, the initial study itself has a, one of the seventeen categories is noise impact. And I believe there, if I can't remember, I believe there was a noise analysis done and it was tied in also with the circulation pattern proposed for the trucks and the times and all that. And, and I do remember that the original initial study did not have these stringent restrictions on the number of trucks that came out of the eleventh hour community meeting where we came up with a community agreement. And then, and in that case, both parties sort of walked out of the room saying, huh? What just happened?
But, but that ended up being what was part of the record at the time that the-
That's correct. In the project description, in the initial study, the project description was actually amended after that community meeting.
Right.
To stipulate that the project direction, project description now articulated just those number of trucks before seven.
But went through a public review process before it went to the planning commission for review and approval?
No, that was in the eleventh hour at the council level after you-
Okay, afterwards, the planning commission.
Yes.
At the, at the town council level.
Correct.
So the town council approved this-
Correct.
Current condition. Okay.
Correct. And they were all, I believe, at the neighborhood, I'm sorry, the community meeting where we hammered out these further mitigation measures.
Any other questions?
Do, do we have a sense of the original noise study? I think it was something we brought up one of the meetings before, what that radius of influence would be around the Good Earth property. Did it extend out to some of these areas in which residents are complaining?
I can't pull out of my mind right now what the noise study entailed. We did have, as part of that community meeting's outcome, a mitigation measure added that would be that the town would revisit the impacts to sensitive receptors. And at that time, we were thinking it would be in more of the Bell area. And we have not had challenges to the amount of noise going on to residential properties in that area. If we had had challenges along those lines, then police officers would have gone out with their noise gauges, stood on the residential property and measured the exact decibel level, like is currently going on, has gone on recently at Deer Park Villa during events. So we're not, we're not, we haven't had to revisit it under the terms of that mitigation measure. This has been, this has grown out of the truck delivery. And then those, the additional early trucks before seven were exacerbating quality-of-life issues for peaceful sleep. And then, when we worked out this three-step process, it was interesting because the focus also started to sort of switch towards the noise from the three allowed trucks, which originally, the three allowed trucks, there was no stipulation that they wouldn't make noise. So we've, we've gone in a positive direction now in terms of articulating eleven source, the neighborhood articulating seven sources of noise. Al putting together this protocol to try to address those noise. We're in the woods now. We're talking about beepers, you know. Most of the beeper, backup beepers, which we didn't even know when we started this process, could be eliminated. Now they can turn it off when they have someone guiding the truck. So now we're down into, it's not that all the trucks are making this backup beep. It's like, well, one truck did it recently. You know what I mean? So that's, in my mind, it may be aggravating that one truck still made beeping noise, but it's positive that all the other trucks aren't making backup beeping noise.
And as far as compliance, though, we are now within the, just the three trucks before seven o'clock.
Well, I, I think you should hear from both sides. I think that, you know, if you look in, I think, both sides' memos, there might, there might have been a truck, for example, that got there eight minutes before six and then waited, because they couldn't come on till six, so they waited. So, and we're not always there to enforce the non-idling and the public right-of-way, which is actually a law. So, you know, those are nuances where it's like, well, was there a truck there earlier or wasn't there? Or if someone went on the site before the sawhorses were erected and then they were told to leave? Well, did that violate the terms of the agreement? Is that of, is that non-compliance? Because they have a learning curve for the drivers that have to realize that they're not going to be able to unload? Or one truck apparently pulled in on center before they were allowed and just dragged the pallets up to the back loading dock and left them and they didn't even know they'd have been arrived? So it's like, is that a violation? It, it gets into these nuances. And it's not the fun part of my life trying to figure out when these things are violations and the other issues that we're often dealing with also. So we're, we're all, I believe, now on the same page in trying to move forward. And I would just say you should hear what both sides have to say.
Shall we move forward with that unless there's any other specific questions? Okay. All right, and we can do questions. So applicant first, go ahead.
I, I first apologize for, you would think I'd be prepared in getting you all our input, our, our version of this presentation. And so I failed to do that. Not, you'd think I'd know that by now here. But I would like to deliver those to you now. I'd also like to submit for the record a couple of things. I will do that in the presentation, but at least we get this out. Again, thank you for your efforts here. I knew it's not easy. You know, your role is important in this town. And, you know, I apologize for this issue even being in front of us today. I, I really have three sections to cover, or three points, three main points to give you. The version of our progress, what we believe has been progress. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for outlining it pretty well. Two, what we really need in the business, for the business in this town. And three, really a response to Bob Mellon's email. You know, our version of progress made in reducing noise to our neighborhoods is, you know, there's an incredible amount of energy that has gone into this by myself personally and a couple of other folks at the store. So I don't, I, I don't want that minimized in our effort. And I don't think it, and I think, Jim, you did well in, in describing parts of it. One of the first things we did was instituting, and this goes back to the meetings that we've had this year. You know, in fact, the first one goes back to the November meeting of last year. So we immediately put in logs, daily logs, where we would log every truck that showed up before seven AM. And, and for the record, I'd like to submit those. I didn't make copies for you all, but for the record, I will submit them. And they do start as early as November twenty-seventh, 2012. There's two sets. We got two doors, delivery doors. One's produce, one's grocery. And so we got two people contributing on a daily basis what these logs hold, which basically, my, my paragraph there says, we want to collect the facts. Who, when, how big a truck it was and what happened, if something happened, noise-wise. Neither staff member helping log the info are held responsible in any way why the truck showed up before its time. So there's, there's no, you know, they're, they're in it just to record. They, they don't, you know, they don't get kudos or we don't come down on them for trying to alter the logs. There's no reason for them to do so. So you'll, it's, it's a pretty good record of what was going on. And it will point to many pre-five AM deliveries this time last year. But essentially, that has stopped completely since January of this year. We, uh, eleven, yeah, so eleven months worth. Within these logs, one would find in a review of them that there hasn't been a single delivery before five AM to the Good Earth since January twenty-first of 2013. Not one. We are in virtually total control and agreement with the big three vendors of ours. With the one exception that Jim just mentioned, veritable vegetable produce rogue driver did pull up next to Iron Springs, across from Iron Springs and dragged two pallets around the store, left them on the, the dock and did not come inside, did not have invoice checked in. He got into some trouble, as we found out afterwards and, and especially after our request. My produce manager made the request of him not coming to our store anytime soon again. The second, well, let me, I'll deliver the logs. My second main point is establishing, establishment of the morning receivers. There are two, that's six days a week that we do get deliveries before seven AM. They work the dock. They work with the truck drivers assisting in any way possible to eliminate and assure a noiseless delivery. Both of the receivers are held responsible for helping the truckers and simply recording the facts. The one, the one and only difficult part of their responsibilities is to turn away anyone who doesn't have permission to deliver before seven AM. This has come in, this, and so that has occurred a whole lot less in the last six months. But between November and the April timeframe, there was quite a bit of turning the trucks around, come back after seven. And there's not too many truck drivers, as we have learned, that will continue to come before seven AM and get that response. So it's been pretty effective. You know, in summary, the basic fact that not all noise made before six AM in Fairfax is a result of Good Earth vendors or staff. In fact, as you may be aware of, the business borders Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, which has semis, buses, trucks, garbage trucks, you name it, going up and down, stopping and starting from the Willow Light and around the location of the store, pretty much 24/7. It's really unfair to make a police report on a Monday morning garbage collection day in this town and claim something woke me up at four thirty AM today and assign it to the Good Earth. So submission to the daily record emails is the third part of this. You'll see, and the, the record will show that the logs for our grocery door stopped, but I have been receiving emails from our receiver every single day on, and him clarifying basically each morning, if anything worth noting did, he would note it to me in an email. He's on task each morning to communicate in as much detail as needed how the morning deliveries went before seven AM. I also submit for the record a copy of those emails. What do we really need? You know, I mean, most grocery stores, anywhere near the volume that we're doing, stock their store before customers or after customers are, are gone. It's, it's, you know, totally inefficient to do anything else. So, you know, we, we look to start that routine at five AM every morning. We have just three hours before we open the store to, to do or to operate with no pallets on the floors while customers are shopping. That's our goal. We pull everything back at, at eight AM to make a clean floor. And then what is left is stocked throughout the rest of the day. And done so pretty inefficiently, but there's little to no choice in that. I remind everyone that we were accustomed to that morning truck coming at three thirty, four AM in the past years, when we were- a.m. in the past years when we were up the street here. So, you know, we got used to that routine. I fully understand the issues that pre-5:00 a.m. noise causes. I allude to the fact that we were blessed with a neighbor at our old location who was virtually deaf for most of her adult life and we simply got away with it without hearing any complaints from her. So we look to start 5:00 a.m. It's critical that we get our grocery truck at 5, four days a week. Each delivery has approximately eight pallets of goods every time. When we don't finish the load each day, which is often, we are left with trying to stock while customers are in the store, not so efficient. Other businesses either don't have the volumes we do or aren't restricted. I believe United Markets has been mentioned, certainly a high-volume store like ours, but the same vendor, they have two stores, one in Santa Fel and a second in San Anselmo that does have a delivery restriction of, I believe, 7:00 a.m. The one vendor truck, say a produce truck or a grocery truck, stops down in Santa Fel every morning, probably pretty early, and it's time to deliver, the second drop is in San Anselmo after 7:00. So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison in what other high-volume grocery stores are doing in the Ross Valley per se. It just simply, the two-store situation for them works out nicely. You're not going to have the same grocery truck deliver to two different stores, two different trucks. It's one, and then one after the other. I also bring up the fact that our understanding from the beginning was that the big three trucks and the numbers of them were being restricted. We did not realize that, in essence, by mistake, we agreed to no other trucks allowed before 7:00 a.m. I do, I don't, I understand why, what led or got us there, but it was a shock a year ago today to realize that we had to restrict the other smaller vendors from arriving at 7:00 a.m. too. This has proven to be very difficult for approximately 20 vendors. We have taken heat from many vendors, drivers and owners of companies who don't understand why they can't deliver to this building town, this building and this town before 7:00 a.m. They are frustrated. Many are small trucks, cargo vans that could successfully drop their products quietly and go. They point out, they point out how much noise on Sir Francis Drake there is after 6:00 a.m. anyways, every morning, and have a real hard time understanding this restriction. They are hoping for this change and frankly, so are we tonight. An afternoon delivery and/or an evening stocking situation is not an option for us. I can elaborate if you, I've done this before a couple of times now, but I'd be happy to do it again upon request. In summary, we'd like to appeal to you for allowing trucks, smaller trucks, to deliver before 7:00, but not before 6:00. We offer this point, we offer this point for consideration, allowing a 6:30 start time for all other trucks as a meeting folks halfway perhaps. My last piece is response to Bob's email. And I gotta breathe here a little bit. You know, with respect, Bob, it's a joke. I really, it really upset me how many items within it were just wrong or outright lies. I'd like to go through them pretty quickly, mainly for the record. And again, I apologize not getting you this information sooner than tonight. His second and third paragraph mentions Steve Frank's early morning noises early as 3:00 a.m. and throws Mr. Weinsdorf under the bus, too. My response is, I tried to really apologize to Franks personally in this hall for the first eight months of business, and yes, I underestimated what impact we have, we were having on the neighborhood. I did it sincerely. It doesn't, I look back at it. It was a flaw, you know. I did not have it in my understanding. I apologize to you again for those, for a very troubling summer. You know, again, 3, 3:30, 4, 4:30 a.m. trucks coming and going all the time and, you know, not good. He says, a year has, Bob says, "A year has passed now and the noise continues to wake up the neighbors," basically insinuating that we are still waking up neighbors up at 3:00 a.m. So it, you know, it's just the wrong implication there. Number two is five paragraphs in, he mentions for the third or fourth time about a petition that is positioned to help carry the weight of tens of neighbors, both constantly complaining and yet so scared to not even call, show up here, write the town, write or call me. Zero, zero. Now, I have some understanding that they, that Bob and Steve are carrying the torch for the larger group that does want to remain anonymous, but at this point, because I haven't seen any petition, I haven't seen what types of questions or concerns are on the petition that they signed. I wonder what it really is and how many other folks we could be disturbing on a frequent Number three was Bob's upset at the commission granting the operating permit. My version of this is sure, we have a permit to operate and I remain on task at reasonably working in good faith on any front, including noise issues. I pledge that. Not because I have a, or we have a permit at this point, am I not going to work towards the, to making things better in all ways. Number four, he cites 11 noises. I can tell you, before 6:00 a.m., most don't happen at all, and none of these noises occur frequently enough for him to paint them like he has. Although he gives credit to our new protocols being in place, he plays, he again, at the end, says, "We are making noise at 4:30 a.m." Factually untrue. He alludes to being at, number five, he alludes to being at a disadvantage because he doesn't have any personal relationships to any of you or of the town council. I say now here on record, I have never had any conversation with any of you or any of the council members. No favors, no communication around this issue at all. I originally met with Weinsdorf, visited Weinsdorf, actually, he visited us, trying to understand what the issues are in his neighborhood. Other than that conversation, nothing other than here in Town Hall. Property values. It surprised me, this one. What I know to be true is a dynamic grocery store like ours is seen an incredible asset to a community. I have heard from hundreds of people over the years about how they either can't move away because they don't, can't leave the store, or wish they could come back because of the Good Earth's business. The lower neighbor, the lower Willow neighborhood is located up against the commercial district of this town. You either choose to live near such a zone or you don't. I live in the country because I chose not to live in or near downtown Fairfax. I'm in San Geronimo Valley, by the way. My house, too, recently, a month, within a month ago, did not appraise high enough and I, too, was disappointed at the lower appraisal value than what I currently owe. So I don't, I don't, I don't, I truly don't think the Willow neighborhood values are driven downward because of the Good Earth. On the second to last page, Bob's email reaches a low point, the point he makes that an elderly woman, who we are aware of because her daughter is in every day and is a very good customer of ours, passed away, and it's recently, and it's Good Earth's noise and only our noise that caused her death. I don't really want to get upset any more than I did when I first read this. I'll just move on. I don't know what you're smiling about, Bob, but I'm not. Wow. Go read your email. Look back at your email.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion? Our protocol is that the speaker should always address the commission.
Thank you. I hear. My last point here, he next, he next points out at the bottom of the second to last page, "Why are GE's well-documented and continue violations not cited by town?" I ask, what documentation does anyone have but us have in the progress we have had since January of this year? I offer, we have three situations, I offer, we have three situations where a truck has driven onto the property after 5:00 a.m. but before 6:00 a.m. For the record, they're the, they were sent, Marin Sanitary driver was breaking the rules and our receivers thought they were exempt from the rule and therefore, they weren't notifying me of their early morning arrivals. As soon as we learned this was happening, we stopped it immediately. I got complete buy-in by Marin Sanitary on that issue. On an aside, my, the receivers that just simply didn't think they were, they were exempt from the noise restriction, mainly because what we know what happens before 5:00 a.m. in this town and really in our neighborhood, too. Poncha Viejas, the businesses by the laundromat, those dumpsters get emptied every Monday morning between 4:30 and 5:30, essentially. And there's muffled back, I know Marin Sanitary has worked well, too, with trying to muffle their sounds, their backup beeps and, but that's where the noise is at. The second truck was a veritable vegetable truck driver. I already mentioned it. I won't repeat it. The third was a raw milk delivery truck driver that drives three to four hours to get to us. He arrived early to drop load. We simply turned him around. We haven't had him come back before 7:00 a.m. since. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant? Any specific questions of the applicant based on the information and his proposal?
I sort of just have a quick question, sort of understanding the delivery process. The morning grocery delivery, five days a week, is that typically the same company, the same driver?
Four days a week, UNFI, our main distributor, and no, it's not the same driver, but very good buy-in from that company. Bob mentioned it in his email, too, that they're playing with us. They know the rules. They actually, the trucks, they come from the Sierra, from Auburn. They stop at Red Hill. If he arrives early, he stops at Red Hill and waits, and then he most often pulls up to our parking lot at 5:00 o'clock. Not too many minutes before, certainly not too many minutes afterwards.
And then the same with some of the smaller companies and the smaller vans. Is it typically many of the same drivers, repeat drivers that you see? Is there a lot of turnover?
There is a level of turnover, yes. So what are you really asking there? Yeah, I mean, I think the trucks, the smaller trucks, I mean, there can be some noise, there can be some backup beeps from these smaller trucks. They're not, I'm not positioning the all other trucks free, just because they're smaller as noise-free trucks. But I, you know, what I also know to be true is the equivalent noise at that time after 6:00 or perhaps after 6:30 is gotta be dwarfed by Sir Francis Drake. I mean, I just...
And then the last question, in the mitigation measures in the 5:00 hour in terms of the beepers and the air brakes and things that were taking place and in the 6:00 hour, are those in place just in those two hour windows or is it throughout the day?
I'm sorry, I missed the very first part of the backup beepers?
Yeah, the backup beepers.
Yeah, it's just, it's mainly for the 5:00 to 6:00, but we do have, well, that's not true. It's 5:00 to 7:00. The three trucks, we have our receivers, work with them. There's a technique at lessening the air brake noise, their, the ability to flip off the backup beeper or not have any beeper on the truck, which is UNFI, a couple of UNFI trucks don't even have the backup beepers. They have, we have a second person, the idea of the person, our receiver being out there is to safely back up the truck without backup beepers. So, yeah, all three, all three companies are, have been and always have been working with us. You know, Earl's trucks, you know, they've gone to phenomenal lengths at successfully eliminating backup beepers. The gentleman that owns the company lives here in Fairfax, has for a long time, Earl, and we've got complete buy-in from him and his drivers.
I have a question. You talked about the smaller trucks having backup beepers. What about air brakes, hydraulic ramps, lift gates and pallet jacks of these, what equipment, what other kind of noise generally?
Yeah, no air brakes. And, yeah, perhaps some backup beeps, certainly. You know, roll-up doors, what?
Lift gate, I'm just...
Lift gates, sure, thank you. Lift gates.
Lift gates and hydraulic ramps.
We have, you know, we do have a, you know, a dock leveller, too, to try to minimize that, minimize the roll-up, I mean, the, them using their lift gate doesn't have to be accessed if we, if there's an open spot on the dock for them to back up into. You know, we're talking about beer trucks and chicken trucks and, you know, drivers, I think they go through. There is some turnover there. A much harder group in terms of pure volume of them to try to manage.
How many are we talking between 6:30 and 7:00 of these smaller trucks? And do you have the capacity for staffing to help mitigate them?
Yes, we do have that capacity. I would say any given, there's about 20 companies throughout the week, but maybe no more than 10 any given day.
Between 6:30, you're getting 10 trucks in between, in that half an hour time, just talking about between 6:30 and 7:00?
Yeah, well, let me clarify. So not, all of the smaller, only the big three trucks come between 5:00 and 7:00.
But you've asked to allow the smaller trucks between 6:30 and 7:00, so I'm trying to get at what that volume is between, after 7:00, you've already got whatever.
Yeah, I would, I would say as many as 10 trucks on our busiest day, delivery days. Right.
I have a couple of questions. On the smaller trucks, are they diesels or are they not diesels?
Combination, I would think. I don't, right off the top of my head, can I, I don't know how I can really answer that. I mean, you have a sense, it's like, so the beer trucks, you know, pedal and the poultry truck, dairy delivery, which is our dairy trucks, bread companies, small vendors, lots of vans, you know, tortillas and juice, you know, there's, there's a wide variety. Short, mainly short bed trucks, though.
I mean, how do trucks typically back up to the dock? Do they start backing up as they come into the driveway or do they enter the driveway and turn around in it to back up?
Well, very specifically, one of the protocols that we put in place for those three big morning trucks is, they have very specific, we don't want them turning at Willow, Officer Francis Drake. They go past, they go up the hill, get to the gas station and come back along center, pull into our lot from center, go across the front of the store and then nose out to where the entry to that east parking lot is and then back up. So the ability for a dry, a big truck, truck driver to do that one time is, that's good ability, you know. On average, they're pretty good. Now, I've seen with my own eyes, I've heard from Bob and Steve around, you know, somebody doing it two or three times before they can get the dock squarely, I mean, the back of the truck squarely up to the dock. But, so for those three trucks, very specific ways to approach and drop, and then we do allow them to pull right out and go. There was a, Bob, I think, made a note to the effect that that's an illegal left-hand turn. I think we're causing, I, it, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change that human behavior unless you put a cop out there every morning between 5:00 and 6:00 to start giving them tickets. Because the idea of them turning right, then going up to center, cutting that corner, trying to make a wide turn into oncoming traffic coming down center, all the way back into town, all the way back to Sir Francis Drake and gone again, not gonna happen. So right out of our lot and go is what the direction is. So you're, so how do the other trucks after 7:00 currently, it's a free-for-all. It's, you know, they get in, some of them just pull into the parking lot and park and then wheel their stuff in. Others, it depends how many other trucks are involved. It's a pretty busy seven to eight hour, that 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. or even later, 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. is pretty busy. We would lessen that impact by being able to spread out the deliveries, at least on a couple of days a week where it's an issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. You say in 2D that nighttime crews are not an option from my own sense of history, can you explain a little about that?
Yeah, so, you know, it's a whole nother operation we'd be running. We, we would be looking to hire a crew of about five folks to start at, what, 9:00 PM, 10:00 PM, even later, and do the graveyard shift. We, at our old location, had a brick oven that we bake bread in, we had a really hard time finding people that knew what they were doing, folks that we can trust on their own in the store at any given time. In, trying to find people in, that would work those shifts. Now, it's, I know it's out there, there's all kinds of, you know, jobs out there in the middle of the night, but operating in a grocery store in Fairfax isn't, isn't one of them. I just don't feel strong about our ability to hire and retain folks to do that. The number one reason though, that that is really not possible is that the big, the, the big truck that would come and drop our groceries off would, they, they would come to us late afternoon, sometime between 4:00 PM and say 8:00 PM or 9:00 PM at night, not later. It's not like we're gonna find a grocery truck driver that's going to pull up at midnight and drop off the load and, and off he goes. It, it's not part of UNFI, our main distributor's scheduling or routing. They, they will, there are, of course, the same vendor supports Whole Foods and I'm sure there are many Whole Foods that stock at night and, and they will get that truck at, like I said, 4:00, 5:00, 6:00 PM and, and then hold the product until after the store's closed and then begin to work it. So, we don't have the space, we could not get a, a 60-foot truck into our parking lot anytime after 7:00 AM, much less 4:00, 5:00 in the afternoon. Third, well, we gain benefit from a, a labor standpoint around folks starting at 5:00 and working, you know, till 1:00, 1:30, 2:00 PM in the day. And so, they will stock the store there in the first three hours of the morning, get the majority of the load up, and then we benefit from their labor being there after we're, we're open, whether it's continuing to stock but helping customers and being, you know, being in a support role through the rest of the day. We would lose that if we had to bring in a team in the middle of the night. So financially, it's a, it's not an option.
I had a question for staff, but not, any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and-
Thank you.
Have a seat. And now we will open it up to public comment, so anyone here from the public who would like to speak may come up to the podium and speak for three minutes, thank you.
I'd be used to this by now. My name is Stephen Franks, I live at 19 Willow Avenue, and I'm just here to say that my morning starts now, thank goodness, it starts at 5:00 rather than 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. As Al said, they have started following the right procedure, it's taking, taking far too long to get to the point that it is now, but they are starting to, they have been following that. As far as backup beepers go, after our last meeting with Jim, the backup beepers were continuing all the way up till our last meeting. Shortly after that, they have cut back on the backup beepers at 5:00 in the morning, which is a huge relief. The, the, the truck air brakes in a 60-foot semi in that parking lot, in that small parking lot, it's at 5:00 in the morning. Al says four days a week, I think it's more like six days a week that the deliveries are being made at 5:00 in the morning. The log is not 100% clear, as he said, the Garberino truck was in there at 5:30 in the morning, you know, with hydraulics going, backup beepers going. As I said, it's hard to control that parking lot unless there's chains around that parking lot because there's several small pieces of whatever plastic that can blow over, fall over, they're not guarding that parking lot, stopping the trucks from coming in. United Markets gets deliveries at 6:00 in the morning, not 7:00. In San Anselmo, they are allowed to have deliveries at 6:00. I believe that is a lot better for the, the neighborhood, 6:00 AM delivery with more trucks, it makes a lot more sense to me. Stop the 5:00 AM deliveries, start deliveries at 6:00 in the morning, it's a reasonable time, everybody's, you know, my alarm clock goes off at 6:00 in the morning and I've been awake every morning since 5:00 except for Sundays. You know, so, that's my recommendation, you know, to do is, the, the place that's been in business for years up the street does and is respectful for that. And that's about all I have to say, but thank you.
I really don't have a lot to add. I was going to correct Mr. Moore when he suggested that there were bad vibes because to my knowledge, until tonight, I didn't really feel that. I mean, you have owners trying to run a business, you've got neighbors trying to sleep. I have to claim that none of this is important enough to me to lie about. I'll admit that the tone of my letter expressed frustration, which has been conveyed to me by our group, the group whose signatures are on the petition that I gave Mr. Moore and the signatures from the lady who passed on, on her survey form six days before she died, I quoted in my letter. At no time did I suggest that the store was responsible for her death, she'd been ill for some time. I did suggest that during her illness, she was made more uncomfortable as was reflected in her statement. Beyond that, I would just like to say, make it clear that our issue here is people being awakened in the morning. It's not how many trucks, it's not the lift gates, it's the noise. And six months ago, I stood here and invited each of you to spend a night at my house and none of you took me up on it. You're invited now. Al and I are the only people I've ever seen at 4:00 in the morning or 4:30 as I did last week, every day to log just on a random basis what the experience was. I'm not gonna get into an argument as to, you know, the details. I do answer to the group and they had a couple of questions that I put in my letter. And one of them is, what are we doing here? What are we doing here? What, what are we talking about? Terms on a permit that are, are not enforced, there's no consequence for non-compliance. Earlier tonight, we talk about a sound wall. The initial permit, section N-OM-2. An acoustical wall or other reasonable mitigation measures will be constructed that will be placed in locations that further mitigate noise impacts to less than significant levels. The acoustical noise wall or other reasonable mitigation measure will be implemented within 12 months after operation of the market begins. This is just one, you know, tonight, the noise wall is discussed as though it's a new idea. This is in writing in the conditional permit, which was, you know, this is just an example. What are we doing here? And I would like an answer now and I'll accept any answer. Are we discussing adjusting a permit that's not being enforced, where there are no consequences for non-compliance? And if that's the case, I, I don't know where to go from here. My group is not happy with my results for the last year and have suggested getting an upgrade. And frankly, I, I have to agree with them. So, can I get an opinion on that? What's our goal here tonight?
I'd be glad-
So, you will, you will talk about that? Obviously, the store has, is making efforts on an ongoing basis. We, we differ in terms of our opinion of what the reality is, but they continue to make investments in making improvements. One of the points that our group, who has signed the petition, has asked me to convey is that getting closer to compliance, as was mentioned earlier tonight, or making things better, is, is not our goal. Once you are awake in the morning, you're awake. It doesn't matter if it's from one truck or 10 trucks, it's, you're awake. And if, for any of you who've had babies, it doesn't matter if you have one baby or four babies, you know, once you're up, you're up. The difference here is, this is aggravating and every day it repeats, it, it's more of an aggravation. We consider our job to be in the community to speak up beyond just complaining about it. We feel unless we speak up and say, here's what's happening, here's why it's a bad thing for us, then we don't have the right to complain unless we're willing to put it on the table and ask the chain of command to do something about it. I've expressed my opinions and the input of our group in my letter. I claim that it's all accurate and I'm, I'm done. Are there any questions?
Can I?
Typically, we do.
Can I have a question?
Go ahead.
That I'd like to ask, cause we heard from, what I heard from Mr. Franks was nothing before 6:00 AM, is that the, is that the representation of the group that you're representing or does the group, they haven't discussed? You've, you've now said that it's not compliance, it's one truck is, is enough, so are you saying the same thing that nothing before 6:00?
You know, you asked me that same question six months ago when I gave you an answer.
And six months ago, I felt like we, we might hear some feedback on, on whether there was any, any, any progress or any, any additional ideas. So, is that the, is, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, are, are you, that was the position six months ago, is that still the position based upon going back and looking and discussing this and, and looking at other options?
You know, since, since, during the last count, I'm advised to simply say that we are being awakened by the noise prior to 6:00 AM. And I gave you my answer six months ago, it didn't make any difference, now this is my answer.
Thank you. All right, so now we will bring it back to the commission for discussion and any further conversation with the-
Chair, can I answer the question that was asked?
Yeah, yes, what we're doing?
What we're doing here tonight?
Thank you.
As the staff report says in the header, our action tonight is we're reviewing the use permit for compliance with delivery vehicle conditions. We're revisiting whether or not the former applicant of the Good Earth Market, who, this item was continued from six months ago, we're reviewing the use permit for compliance with delivery vehicle conditions.
And those delivery can be the vehicle condition, the, the compliance issue is three vehicles, no more than three vehicles-
That's correct.
Before 7:00?
That's correct.
And was there an early time on that, between 5:00 and 7:00?
That's correct.
Okay, so that was, that's, the use permit says three vehicles between 5:00 and 7:00-
That's correct.
And unlimited, and that's the compliance-
That's correct.
For the use permit.
And then, if I may also add, our standard operating procedure, and this is true for the other items that have been discussed at the council level recently, where we've talked about our opportunities to enforce compliance through administrative citations and in the worst case nuisance abatement. In each one of those cases, and in my four and a half years here, very rarely have we actually issued a citation. Our modus operandi is to seek compliance, to get to compliance. We don't come at it in a draconian punitive way. We have a lot of challenged properties in this town, we have a lot of, of properties that have deferred maintenance and that are in different states of disrepair. We go about our business as, as productively as we can in seeking compliance. So, yes, staff, staff has at its disposal the administrative citation process. It also has at the more extreme end of the process nuisance abatement. Council can get involved directly with nuisance abatement, they are the ones that trigger nuisance abatement. If you notice in those prior discussions at the council level regarding the administrative citation, the town attorney is always advising them, they should not get into directing staff with regard to administrative citations because they sit as the appellate body. It's a staff-level decision whether you issue fines. I might add that the administrative citation process, while helpful, is not always easy to get, to make the claims on the punishment, to get, gain the fines. You can put lean on property, et cetera, et cetera. We seek compliance and when we have response in a positive direction, we go with it and we continue. I believe that there is a price that's being paid in terms of PR with the store for having had to deal with something that was not being adequately dealt with. This is not something we, staff are choosing to do, we're in the role of having to help mitigate this. So, again, what we're doing here tonight is reviewing the use permit for compliance with the delivery of vehicles. And I would reiterate again, that in that original document, it did not say that those three trucks' noise would be reduced to zero. And finally, Mr. Mellon is articulating in the mitigation and monitoring plan, there was an item under noise to revisit and a discussion about a sound wall or other intervention. That gets back to my earlier statement about sound complaints from the Bell neighborhood at the property line. This is a little bit different topic than just what the noise is at the residential property line at the given hour. This is sort of evolved in another way. So, there, there, you know, this is time that they're having to spend on this. They are paying a price by having to focus on this and live up to the agreement. I sincerely, after hearing both sides speak tonight, I was relieved to hear Mr. Franks say that there had been some progress. I was, I was happily relieved to hear that. I think Mr. Mellon is, is a very articulate, skilled spokesperson and, and makes this case very strong. Having said that, again, it's a very difficult position for the town to always get there in a, in a, in a split second and figure out exactly what's going on. I think going forward, having access to the tapes with a seven-day retention period will help us get to the bottom in, if there are any violations. And if we so choose as town staff at a later date, when, if there were flagrant violations that showed up on the tape, then we would collectively make a decision whether to implement the administrative citation process. But again, our first modus operandi with all people indiscriminately is to seek compliance. Thank you.
I actually just have one question for staff, at least for right now. The, there's two incidents reports included in the staff report, are the, are those the only- The, there's two incidents reports included in the staff report, are the, are those the only ones since April?
Yes, and they're inconclusive as to any violation.
So if I'm understanding correctly, kind of where we're at, there has been movement in terms of being compliant. The applicant is still wanting, it sounds like both sides weren't happy with what was agreed to in the beginning. The applicant realized, I agreed to only having three trucks and I need more. And the neighbors were like, ah, we didn't include sound when we said they could only have three trucks before seven. And, but there was no, there wasn't, in the use permit agreement, there was no articulation of the noise with respect to those trucks. It was just three trucks.
Except, except in the standpoint of the sensitive receptors, they were having more noise coming into their residential properties than are allowed at a given time and verified by decibel meters, then we would take other action. And it's true, we had hoped to do that in the first 12 months of operation. In a perfect world, we would have. We also said we would put in a crosswalk mid-block on Pastore to Bell. Somewhere along the lines, that didn't happen. There's things that, yeah, in a perfect world, all these things happen immediately as planned. As you know, and you're always hearing from me, we're understaffed. We have a to-do list that is beyond what can possibly be done, including the implementation of the general plans 500 programs. So we do, we go sometimes from the biggest fire to the biggest fire.
And your, I'm just getting, what I was getting at was your recommendations, B and C are moving farther this direction or farther that direction. A is kind of status quo and D is, do you have any other ideas?
Exactly, and then B and C, I think both sides, you know, just as we heard six months ago, would like to move in their respective direction. I think if you go in either B or C's, and you heard that tonight echoed, and I think if you go in either B or C direction, you will have an appeal. I personally think it'd be nice to not belabor this again at the council level. We have moved forward movement. We have, I believe, a sincere effort to establish the protocol with the vendors to minimize the trucks to three before seven. And they're taking the extra step to try to, well, they're taking a genuine step to try to minimize the impacts from those three trucks. So people can sleep at least till six. I think that continuing to minimize the noise from that early market truck in the five o'clock hour would behoove the Good Earth, if they ever wanted to come back in again and request restrictions on more trucks after six in the morning. Nothing, nothing restricts the, the Good Earth from coming in at a future date and revisiting the request to relax the number of small trucks or big trucks after six o'clock. And likewise, nothing restricts the neighborhood to come back into the open-mic period at the town council or here and say, it's gotten worse again. Or it's not getting better yet, it's not 100%. We will have the tapes to verify the number of trucks before seven. We'll have more definitive empirical information and the applicants agreed to share that. So I think if you're going in the direction of my reiterating the recommendation, my recommendations, particularly on the heels of putting this fence in, that's hopefully going to help mitigate noise going up the Willa direction, is to go with A and be done with it. And that's actually not taking any action. That's not an appealable action, it's staying with the program. We've done our public meetings, we've discussed the issue, we've made progress. Hopefully, it will continue in a positive direction. Your action with A is not appealable.
So just a clarification, if, if A included a provision that the applicant provides staff with the evidence or video camera information, is that, does that make it appeal?
Well, that's a good question. Maybe, maybe I'm misspeaking with it not being appealable.
Sounds like anything's appealable.
I might have to think this through with council a little bit further. It might be, there might be some aspect of it that can be appealable, so I retract that. But I think you could go with A and say, you know, we would request that, I don't think you can demand it, but I think you can say, we would appreciate it. Because if you're staying with the status quo, basically, that's where we are at this point in time. It will help us with enforcement and to verify compliance by having the tape. I think it behooves the Good Earth to share that information with us. And they're volunteering that. Again, I think the spirit of cooperation has grown immensely.
Okay, let's bring it back for, if you have any more questions or discussions.
Well, just, just a remark on Mr. Mellon. I, I think this, this three-part October 7, 8, and 9 log was by Mr. Mellon, I believe. And, and, and looking at it, it's, it's fair, there, there's some aspects of this that are fairly close to compliance. I mean, for example, you cite on October, you know, October 7th with the, with the sanitary trucks, it's really hard to know maybe what's going on there. And some of that might be, but you have cited, you know, UNFI trucks and organic produce trucks. But then look at that, it's, it's from 5:00 to 5:41, you have a 60-foot truck, that's in compliance. And 6:00 to 6:20, you have a 30-foot truck with no noise. And, and thank you for, as you said, you know, being honest and, and noting that. And then October 9th looks like an, an issue however. October 9th looks like you have, but at 4:30 AM, there's, there are things blocking the entrance to the parking lot, which obviously shows the Good Earth is trying to comply with that restriction. And then you, you do have a, a, I'm not sure what that is, a van at 5:16, another unmarked van at 5, you know, 5:35, et cetera, and you can read it yourself. And then you're saying there was a 30-foot truck and a 45-foot truck at 5:58 with a question mark, with air brake noise. So, and the Good Earth has testified, there's techniques that truckers can use to limit the air brake noise. So I think A is a good choice with a slight modification. And that is to have the Good Earth not only comply with that, but perhaps try to instruct their trucks, the drivers, you know, not to idle when they don't, when they don't, shouldn't be. There was a note somewhere about idling, a truck idling empty. Okay. You know, that shouldn't happen. So I think the compliance idea, if, if it was a little stricter, might really work for you. Plus this fence, the, you know, the sound fence that we're talking about extending, might really help. So I think it might be kind of a, let's try that and see how it goes. That's my, my suggestion.
And I, and I would run into your question earlier in terms of the alignment of what we heard from the neighbors tonight. From a strict definition of compliance with the use permit, based on what we've seen, between five and seven, you can have seven trucks and that's, that's strict definition of compliance. But we also heard the word, use of the word compliance, meaning don't wake anyone up. And, and that's compliance with what the community would like to see, but it's not compliance, in my understanding of complying with the use permit. So it's what, there are members of the community who would want, in terms of what are we doing here? Are we going to try and not wake anyone up in the morning or comply with the use permit? I, I don't know how can, we can not wake anyone up in the morning. I think we need to look at what happens between six, what happens between five and seven. And seems like it's gone even beyond just compliance, which is three trucks, no more than three trucks, in my mind, so.
If I may, I think there's still a good reason for the Good Earth to be motivated to minimize, if not eliminate, the noise from the three trucks before seven. And so if, if that were neighborhood?
So just to point out, it's one truck before six, it's two trucks between six and seven. On the ninth, there are one, two, three, four, essentially five trucks before 6:00 AM. So, and, and so that, that, and whether, you know, again, it's, it, I don't have the other record. Neither does anybody else. I'm not, what I'm actually disappointed, what I felt this was, was six months for the two parties to actually have discussions and see if there was an opportunity for resolution. Basically, the report back from staff is that, no, there's not, nobody's changed their positions. And it's been passed to us to sort of look at, are there changes that can be made or, or not? And I, I value staff's recommendation that, you know, the town went through this process, there was public notice. It might not be the best thing for anybody. And I agree, our, the, the compliance is with the number of trucks and the times. And I, I, I think it's important to respect that there's been a lot of work to try to mitigate the impact. And I, I feel that there has been some and there can always be more. I'm disappointed that when the fence came up, that nobody actually spoke to the information about the sound and as an opportunity to, to look at that. It, it's a bit confusing to me that, that the fence wouldn't be considered an opportunity and helpful, but we didn't hear that from the public. But that said, I think, I think it's important to make it a condition that, that the Good Earth provides the, the camera information when requested. So that it's conditioned, it's not, it's sort of, but it's not like you have to give it to them every day, it's when there's a complaint and you want to review it. Because you don't want that much data either.
And I think they're willing to do that, so.
Yeah, so I think it's important that, that that's a condition. But I feel, the more I hear, the, the less comfortable I feel about trying to change it at all. I think if we were to change it, I would want sort of a, let's start over and let's look at a lot of things. I'm looking at the town circulation element that says peak, peak periods of traffic in the morning are 7:00 to 9:00 AM on Sir Francis Drake. You know, I mean, so there's a lot of considerations, noise certainly being one of them and effects on the neighborhood. But if we were to look at this again, I think we'd be looking at other things like, do we want 20 trucks coming in at seven? But, you know, right now, that's where, that's the permit that was issued. And I think trying to open that might open up a whole bunch of other, other questions.
I would agree with that and I, I personally would entertain additional review after tonight. I, I don't think, given where we are, that we should shift to this end or to that end tonight. But I think looking at the schedule of delivery and traffic impacts and all these other kinds of things with smaller trucks at another time, I would be open to looking at that. So.
Well, I, I guess I would say I'd be open to looking at it, at a labor time, as long as there's a study that accompanies it, that actually is, it's not, here's what we want to do. It's, it, it's sort of that noise element or that, that it's required before the application is deemed to complete essentially. Because I think this is one of those cases where if, if we really are going to dig into that can of worms, I think we'd want all of the information before we really reopen it. And I think there could be value to it, I, I just don't feel like we have the information to be able to make any, any good decisions at this point.
Would you be comfortable with the applicant just going on the record tonight that he's willing to share the video loop, the seven-day video loop when we get a complaint as, as a way to guarantee that, rather than adding a condition to the previous conditions of approval?
So if we're on the record and then he says no, then what's your remedy?
Then we have more of a challenge to find the empirical information of violation, but we would be motivated to do that.
And why don't you want it as a condition? And the condition being that it would be supplied when requested, not regularly?
Supplied upon request.
All right, we're, we're fine with, if you want to add a condition.
And I'm, I'm actually thinking of just, it's a modification to your A, which is...
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the way I was, if, if it was to be, it would be modifying A to, you know, direct the applicant to comply with the
Right.
existing permits and provide video, what is it called? The video evidence if requested by the town.
We're all fine with that. And that will be there to help us and also if we revisit this issue in the future at an undetermined time, for either side's reason, we will understand whether that was compliant.
I see the video as simply tied to compliance. And I understand that the neighbor's concerned that that maybe not, doesn't address the concerns they have. But in terms of the tools we have and, and the conditions that were placed on this permit, that's, it's enforcing the, that's what is possible for the town.
We're good with that.
I'd also like to see, can we also add the other measures that the Good Earth is doing, like with the receiver to make sure that the drivers are all, also in compliance with the noise reduction measures that the Good Earth has tried to...
In other, in other words, as a condition to put in, they continue their mitigation.
Yes, that they continue with like a limit, with trying to, you know, reduce the use of backup beepers and all the other items that were listed during the discussion tonight.
Okay. Maybe wait a few minutes?
So I, I think, yes, real short. So I just, I did want to clarify 10-9, because I did state that we have not violated the, the rules here. And so on 10-9, yes, that veritable vegetable truck, the first item there, was what we were talking about. The guy got into trouble because he parked over there, he brought the pallets around to the dock and left. So that's what, that's, that's a, you know, I classify it as a rogue driver situation. The unmarked van, I, I don't know about unmarked, but I am familiar with a bread delivery in a cargo van, essentially, that they pull up over there across from Iron Springs and walk the, the rack into the center street doors. They don't go over to the ramp or to the dock at all. So I'm, I'm, I think, and we've allowed her to do it, it's a local bread company. There's, you know, when we, when I watch her do it, there's, you know, no noise. So I feel even technically, it could be considered a violation, they, she's still delivering before 6:00 AM. But I challenge anybody to find noise coming from that operation. And then, so the UNFI truck was late that day, so they showed up at 5:52. And the, the produce truck, organic produce truck showed up at 5:58, two minutes before there, if Bob's timing is correct, there, two minutes before their allowed time. I don't know what the second UNFI mention there is, but we only have one truck from UNFI, just to clarify. And then the, I am willing, totally willing to provide video and audio evidence. Currently, our system is only video, so we'd have to, I'd have to adapt it, but I'm willing to do that. Well, it's odd, well, in terms of them pulling up sooner than, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, we can comply with that, no problem. Thank you.
So I appreciate everybody coming here, I think there's big opportunity costs involved for everybody as well as real costs involved. You know, unfortunately, it's, it's a difficult situation. Somebody's trying to operate a business and then there's members of the community that want the community to be quiet. And I, I think in terms of the residents, unfortunately, there are people who lived there before Good Earth, who maybe came after Albertson's. So there's new activity that wasn't in place when someone acquired housing. I think there are people that lived there while Albertson's was in operation and were subjected to noises. And then the people that moved in between and now all of a sudden there's new noise, we're trying to mitigate that. So I, I appreciate that. When I first moved... When I first moved here, I think I mentioned in a, in a meeting before, trash trucks came on my street at 4:30. And I called and inquired and we weren't allowed to have trash trucks in our neighborhood until 6:00, and so it stopped. So there's that compliance issue. And then sometimes they started sneaking early and earlier and I would call and complain and they were back into compliance. Um, I think where I have difficulty is, as a data person, is the data reliable? Is it sufficient? Is it accurate? And I sort of look at the police incident reports in absence of anything else as the most credible, reliable that we can have. And in terms of sufficiency, we have two data points at most in a six month window. And so basing off violations, looking at that, we're not going to have 100% compliance by anybody on anything all of the time. It's, it's the real world. And there is going to be turnover. There's going to be a new truck, a new company, and training is going to be required. So I think working on the realistic side, that if the owner's willing to work with new vendors that are a rogue driver and making a concerted effort, that that's taken into consideration in the decision-making process. There are going to be some things out of control of the owner of the business. Um, as a resident, you don't necessarily want to be the person that calls the police every single time there's a violation. And yet, that's the tool that we have available, absent of a better tool. And if there are multiple incidents over and over and over that can show us compliance and, okay, three minutes early, yeah, that's out of compliance. But, you know, one, we need documentation and two, we need that reasonability. And I think for me, making a decision to relax constraints or say an owner's in compliance, I need that kind of hard data. Video surveillance could help. Looking at the six month window and hearing how the owner's trying to mitigate and trying to work by putting up fencing and sound walls and working with the, the vendors, I think I'm more willing to say the owner's done what's asked and maybe a little bit extra, that I would be the one erring on maybe allowing some smaller vans to start delivering at an earlier hour, whatever that might be, 6:30, 6:45, um, trying. But I, I think in looking at the whole packet, it's not to say that there aren't violations, um, but properly documented violations that we can use to base this on a consistent basis in all practices, um, I, I think is really required going forward.
Yeah, I, I agree with that data issue. I mean, from an evidentiary standpoint, we really don't have enough evidence for...
Question.
Uh, we don't really have enough evidence to say there's a continuing non-compliance. We don't have, uh, we don't have that. So I, I think the suggestion of supplying the town with videotapes is a great one, and I think that would help. And as I said before, the fence, hopefully that will help. The sound is a really tough thing to limit. And I've had personally clients who've, who've had sound issue, you know, emanated sound, rock bands in a garage, that type of thing. You can do technical things to limit the sound. So I'm, I'm all for, let's see what the fence does. Um, I could go with a modified A, as Barrett suggested, and I think that's, that's the way to go. But we do need more evidence over some period of time to really determine whether there's compliance or not.
So the two modifications that I hear so far to, um, A would be changing it to direct the applicant to comply with the existing use permit and provide video evidence, uh, video evidence when requested. And then I also heard from Commissioner Caroline to add an A2, meaning, um, applicant shall continue with mitigation measures as per the 1017 staff report and the applicant's, uh, whatever you call this letter, submission letter. Um, and that would cover, all existing mitigation measures shall continue on into the future. So those are the two kind of modifications that I'm hearing so far.
Well, let me, let me ask staff whether it would be appropriate to specify mitigation measures such as including limiting, um, unnecessary idling, um, you know, teaching, teaching them to use the braking technique, uh, turning off beepers when you can safely do that, which is a big, you know, potential problem too.
That, that's actually in their protocol list that they gave to the drivers. That's part of the protocol that you're now tagging on to number A to continue. Yeah.
And as, generally as a audience, we, we've tried to err on the side of being, setting the goal, not trying to prescribe what, how to meet that goal, because there's always a better or different way that in five years might be better. And we, we were so descriptive that we might limit opportunity in the future.
And but as far as what they're doing, they are being prescriptive in their own way on how to deal with eliminating the backup beeper. So that protocol that you're calling for going forward will prevail. And we've been given the handout that they are giving their handout, as a handout to the drivers.
So could we just, um, does it have a title and reference it? Could we just reference it in this?
Just say the protocol in place.
The protocol in place. Okay.
Um, do we know when Pancho Villa's earliest deliveries come in? So it could be possible that Pancho Villa is getting a delivery that's mistaken for Good Earth's delivery?
I couldn't answer that.
They're not serving at 7:00 AM, that's for sure.
Any other comments or changes or directions?
I, I think the other comment I, I want to make, and I just, it, this is more of a, a big picture. I don't want to get into, and I, I, I mean, I, I think that's the question of why are we here? I, we did have a situation where I think for two years, we had every six months, an applicant return with sort of, how did it go? What changes? And, and so we don't want to get into that either. And I, I, I guess that's my point with, with this, is I feel like there was a process, there, there were conditions placed. We need to meet those conditions. We need to have a better way of ensuring that those conditions are being met. And I do think that the video could help with that if there are any questions. Um, and I, I think it's really important that if there's any proposals in the future to modify these conditions, that, you know, it's very clear that, that there needs to be a, a, a more robust, um, kind of dedicated study towards all of the issues that we've been talking about. So that, uh, if, if a change is proposed, it's, it's backed by some, some real, real data and real information.
But I, I think six months ago when we met, it was under the...
I thought there was an opportunity.
Well, that it was, meet the conditions and then maybe some of the conditions can be relaxed. And I think I feel that those conditions have been met and there has been compliance with the data that's presented.
Well, and I, I guess that's where I, I would, um, hm, I, I don't feel like there's been an effort to, to determine. I didn't, it wasn't about, yes, compliance was a step, but it was also, is there opportunity and remedy? And I haven't heard that, that there is. And I, and I, I haven't heard a change in either side's positions. You know, there hasn't been, uh, oh, we could work something out. There's a request for 6:30, but it's, doesn't appear to have been presented or requested. So, you know, I, I think at this point, it's to stick with what's been in place. And, and we need a lot more information before we really do adjust on either side.
I do agree with you that, you know, in the discussion of, from the staff report, there was compliance going beyond compliance to improvement and then an incentive around that. And I think ideally, the hope was that it was clear, both parties said, yes, let's do that. But now there's not agreement around what that reward looks like. And so that's what's unfortunate at the moment. And I think, again, part of that maybe is what there doesn't seem to be. Maybe there was an agreement on exactly what compliance meant or what improve, you know, the words reduce or eliminate noise. Okay, they didn't eliminate 100%. There's still maybe people waking, you know, waking up. So it's interpreting of, do you, do you reward if it's not 100% fixed, even though you've made improvements in that direction? And that's what I'm finding challenging. So, um, I agree. And I do think that there've been a lot of efforts made. And I would like to, but I'm hesitant to at the moment. So I think coming back with really clear data and evidence to ask for that is, is an open possibility.
And I, I think part of what I'm chiming in on is that the, those closest affected to the property haven't seemed to come forward and complain. And that's not to say that sound doesn't carry. But I'm just a little surprised that those who live most adjacent to the properties aren't complaining.
I have one question. Um, how, when did you implement the seven day film archive, the video archive?
It has not been implemented.
It has not been implemented. Okay.
They're going to extend, extend the...
Extend the three day?
The archive from three to seven.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there's, there's no storage happening. I think that's what you're referencing. And we will store that cam, we don't have the capacity to, to store all 16 cameras on and around inside the building. But we do have the capacity to record and store just that camera and keep it for at least seven days.
Okay.
Probably even longer.
Okay. Thank you.
So the only other change I made, uh, to the amendment to A was to continue with mitigation measures in place as per the 1017 applicant submission and the staff report, including the protocol list provided to staff by the applicant. So that addresses adding in more of the specifics that you just mentioned, because those are part of that protocol list. Any further discussion or?
Well, that, that kind of sounded like a motion.
Just helping to clarify and, and, um, making sure we're comfortable with, eventually we do have to take action, so.
Can I just, while you're pondering a motion, can I just reiterate that the three-step program, which the end goal was sort of a win-win on both sides to get to the reward, that, the logic of that three steps, I mean, is still there after tonight. It's still in place. That, it would be wonderful to get to the point where the neighborhood is happy and can sleep longer in the morning, and that they would be willing to relax the truck delivery schedule after 6:00 in the morning. That, that's still an option out there. Let's just hope that between the fence and the implementation of the protocol, that the neighborhood will be happily surprised in the not-too-distant future and be here glowingly supporting, relaxing the delivery system. Let's just hope that we can get there.
For sure. Uh, nobody likes being woken up early in the morning. I'm used to getting up at four for a long time before sunrise, you know, working on a farm a long time ago. And I don't like it anymore. So.
I will entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one.
I'm ready to, um, make a motion to adopt the continue, and did we say the option, keeping, option A, keeping, um, the existing use permit with the amendments that we previously discussed.
And you have a right to.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Your line?
Aye.
That's it?
Nay.
Green.
Aye.
Got you.
Aye.
Aye.
Harvard.
And Chair.
Aye. So, um, use permit review is concluded and there's a 10-day appeal process?
I've actually been thinking about this. And really, that, what you did is you added conditions to the use permit. So I think what their action would be is if they feel that the conditions aren't being complied with, they can again request that we revisit the use permit. But there's not technically an appeal because there hasn't really been a change to the approved application, you know?
And that, that we, if, if someone wanted to appeal, we would talk with legal counsel to make sure that our opinion is correct.
And I think you made it pretty clear that, that any kind of revisiting would need to be backed up by, you know, some documentation, um, that we could verify. I mean, is...
I think we modified the conditions of approval per your decision with A as stipulated.
Which you didn't read from it.
Right.
Is it, is a better word?
The problem is, I guess what we'll have to do is if legal counsel says we're wrong and it is appealable, we'll have to notify anyone that might want to appeal. Right?
Let's just say that anyone has to talk to you within 10 days to find out whether they can?
Are we welcome to appeal and we'll find out?
Right. Right. Well, okay. All right.
Um, what, an idea? I mean, maybe the word isn't amendment, or we can use suggestions or some other type of language that may not make it seem like we're modifying the use permit.
Now, let us, let us wrestle with it. We're okay. We're okay. Okay.
Okay, agenda. Where are you? Moving on with the agenda. Uh, minutes from September 19th.
There was only three of us.
There was only three of us. Which three of us were there? Oh, yes.
Yeah. So can, just a point of, or can the, if there are only three of us that were there, can we still?
Because there were only fi, five...
It's a quorum of the...
There's only five on the, on it at that time.
You only had five commissioners at that time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think you can take action.
All right.
I am gonna, I'm just gonna fess up to the fact that I haven't gone through this in as much detail as I would like to. And so I'm gonna have a hard time approving it tonight. I would like to ask for continuance of these minutes.
We don't have a quorum for the, I think we need all four.
Thank you.
It's not like we could have voted.
I know that's not a, a standard thing to do, and I hope that that doesn't monkey up any future process with this particular situation.
It will only monkey it up if I forget to put it on the agenda next time, but Jim will help me.
Okay. So I would like to request that we continue these minutes.
No problem.
Thank you for, do I need to, do we need to motion that thing and whatever?
No.
No. Okay, great.
Tabled.
All right. Director's report.
All right. So, as you know, Madam Chair, the General Plan Implementation Committee is nearing the end of their drafting of the draft climate action plan. It will be, um, coming to you all next month for a flyby. What, what do I mean by flyby? You don't get to chew on it for multiple months, because this is just as a courtesy coming to you. So when we give you the agenda next, or the agenda in the packet next month, if you're inclined to go through it to whatever degree you like, fine. Make comments and submit your comments at the meeting. Either if they're laborious in, you know, give us track change or a, or a, you know, a hand-marked up version. If you have comments you want on the record for the council to consider, but come prepared to do business quickly on the climate action plan. It is a courtesy to bring it by you, so that those of you that have the bandwidth and tenacity to burrow into this at this hour, um, have, have an opportunity to do so. There's been a lot of work that went in by an ad hoc subcommittee that also worked with two council people that are interested in this topic. And I imagine when it gets up to the council level after you all, hopefully in December, um, that there'll be some chewing on it at the council level. But it's going to be a living document. Um, part of the recommendation that the G-PIC will be making in December, in addition to delivering the draft climate action plan, will be, um, in making recommendations in formally creating a, a climate action committee. And then it'll be up to council whether they want to do that and to create the resolution articulating the duties and all the other things that go with the creation of a committee. Second, if, yes?
So the, the action that we, I'm just clarifying, the action that we would be taking on it is to accept the report, not... is to accept the report, not approve it and resolution it up to council. That's, it's going straight to council. I'm just clarifying also that we're just accepting it, putting our comments in, we're not approving it with a resolution to go up to council, we're just accepting it as presented and giving the comments in that sense.
It's probably a distinction without a difference. You could, you could pass it by resolution, you could say, we accept it, we approve it, we pass it on, you know, different ways to move it forward. But yeah, it's just to get your two cents in if you see anything glaring. And again, it then, once it gets to council and gets adopted, formally adopted, and they create a Climate Action Committee, that committee will take ownership and it will evolve over time. Hopefully, we will move in a more progressive direction as things become more dire on the planet and we realize that we really have to do more. It's going to be a really wonderful event to get this going. And of all places in this country for it to be wholeheartedly embraced, the county with the largest carbon footprint is a good place to start. Okay, also, if you recall, we had a joint meeting in this room about the amendments to the housing element and the three bodies that had the public hearing, the Planning Commission, the G-PIC, and the Affordable Housing Committee. The G-PIC stands for General Plan Implementation Committee. They endorsed those amendments and directed staff to move it up to HCD. Council had a parallel special meeting, but not a public hearing because they will get this back next Tuesday. So what we did was we forwarded it up to HCD. Our subconsults had a conference call with HCD staff on the 26th of September. They gave us direction on further edits. We turned those edits around to them, and they gave us three more little edits beginning of this week. And I am about to receive tomorrow the final edits that HCD says are required for compliance. And those edits in track form will be presented to the town council in advance of next Tuesday's special meeting at the youth center at 7 o'clock, public hearing on the final adoption of the amended 2010 housing element, along with an addendum to the mitigated NAGDEC that no additional environmental impacts from these amendments are taking place. And I expect to get prior to the Tuesday night meeting, either Monday or Tuesday, a letter from HCD, which is the magic conditional letter of compliance, meaning that if council passes that draft with those edits, then the final certification letter will be forthcoming within 90 days. So we're almost there. And there's 300,000 bucks in this game for the parquet improvements. The Obe grant that we were awarded previously from the Transportation Authority of Marin is predicated on us having a complete streets program, which we do, and having a certified housing element by January 31st of 2014. So we're almost there. That's good news. Let's see, what else is going on? There was something else I was going to mention. Oh, we have two new members, and forgive me for not starting off with this, I would like to personally welcome you formally in front of the town. Esther, let me see if I say your last name correct, Gonzalez Tarber?
Tarber.
Tarber?
Parber.
Parber, excuse me, Parber, excuse me, I almost got it, Parber. Welcome, it's gonna be an honor to serve you. And Phil Green, who had been on our Affordable Housing Committee, so we had a little chance to work before this, welcome, it's gonna be an honor to work for you and it is with all of you. You've got your, thank you, you've got your 700 forms, get them into the clerk. We have videotapes of the two-hour training that was previously done, and Roxanne, you'll want to take advantage probably of this training on the Brown Act also. We're required every two years to have you all do training. This is sort of like doing your own driver's ed class online, if you will. So heads up on that, and I'll get you those documents. And I hope to have lunch, catch up lunch with you, Roxanne, and lunch with the two of you as time permits going forward. So welcome, it's great to have a full planning commission tonight, even though Shelby's not here. And let's see, finally, I think that's about it. Oh, the final thing is, we have in our general plan a matrix that you should familiarize yourself with in the back of that document, and it lists the 500 programs, this is no joke, 500 programs. It was bifurcated in the first, for the first year's goals for the planning commission. I'm going to go back now with Bruce and get a two-year bifurcation, because most of the activity is in the first two years. I'm going to come back in at a subsequent meeting with you all with that two-year matrix and, and show you what I think we've accomplished, what we've accomplished, what's in motion, what's high priority and what's low priority, for you to give me feedback on whether you feel that's adequate from the planning commission. I will also include in their planning staff's mandate on what we're doing parallel to this with our three, now four-person department. And so I'll be bringing, we'll be revisiting that. And either, if not, if not December, we'll do it in January, which will kick off the calendar year's activities. And then lastly, we will, part of those implementation programs involve moving forward with development of a town center plan as called for in the town center element. Very confusing to have an element that calls for a plan, but that's the case. And that we are starting to look forward to. And Corwin will actually be helping me doing some background data mapping and creating a problems and opportunity map as a launching point for the public sessions that we'll be starting sometime after the first of the year, probably not till spring. We have a lot of background work to do. And then we'll be holding a series of public workshops and probably going into the latter half of next calendar year, we'll start to actually craft a document, which will be the town center plan. So stay tuned, we have some hot button issues. We have managed parking, we have the pedestrianization of Polinas Avenue. There was another one that raised his head the other day, oh, the, the street improvements that happened on Center between Pastore and Pacheco, seems to be a lot of people going up over a curve into the planner box at the far end going east out of town. And there's a lot of discussion about, you know, having removed parking and no places for trucks to deliver to the other things there, so that will probably be on our, our scope of review also, yes.
With the changes in the zoning that were enacted with the general plan, does the town center now go all the way down Sir Francis Drake, down to Mauro's area? Is that, is that, that's, there's no difference, that goes all the way down there, correct?
There is a map on the general plan that's basically all the CC, okay? And I think there's actually something, some language in the general plan that we can revisit that map and massage the borders if we think it needs massaging or alteration. So anyway, I think there might have been something else, but at this late hour, I'm getting a little brain dead, I can't remember what it is. That's it, thank you.
So now we have no discussion items?
No.
But we move to commissioner comments and requests.
Do we have a discussion item?
Well, that's commissioner comments and requests.
I'm actually satisfied on that, but so when I did have my own personal experience with Marin Sanitary coming in before permitted hours, one of the feedbacks I got from the higher up was that Fairfax as a community was one of the few communities that doesn't have a restriction or has a very early restriction in our business district, that most of the other communities have a 6 o'clock or later in their business and 8 o'clock or later often in some of the residential areas. We're 6 o'clock residential and it was either 4, 4:30 in our business district. Just sort of putting that out there is it's awfully early and some of the noises that we're hearing in that downtown district may be related to that, and if it's anything we want to do anything about.
If you want to direct us, we could do a little research on that and come back with a little information as a discussion item. And then you all would have more information if you wanted to collectively vote on passing this up to council for further consideration on modifying the allowable times of trash pickup. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it might, you know, they redo their garbage contract, and it may be easy to fix.
Well, we'll find that out, what the new contract's about and talk to Debbie.
So is it a contract issue or a town code?
It could be a, it may be a contract.
We can make it a town code issue if we want.
If other towns negotiate with Marin Sanitary, so if other towns have-
To get them, you know, to come at a later time, then there must be a way for us to do it as well, whether it's-
That's why they're all starting here early. Way around. Any other commissioner comments or requests?
I was actually just curious, there was a project, it's been over a year since I think we approved it at the old Lydia's. They're gonna be redeveloping that and all that, is that happening or not?
Yeah, you know, they ran into problems where they discovered some kind of mold underneath the flooring, and so it's just grown into a lot bigger project than they thought it was going to be. And they have a property owner that's not always that agreeable to chipping in to pay for things, so it's really a money issue is what's slowing it down.
I have a request of staff. It's a question that may be followed up with a request depending on the answer to the question. What is the status of the light timing? You know where I'm going with this, right? What is the status of the timing of the streetlights on?
Traffic lights.
Traffic lights.
You know, I don't know anything about the mechanics of that, but I know it was looked into, and for whatever reason, it's like an equipment interface problem where it's going to cost money to try to do that, and so it always just gets kind of shoved away.
Could I request that's-
Because the one light is San and Selmo and was put in at a different time.
It would be great if we could look into a memorandum of understanding between the two communities to work on signal timing.
I would like to actually be very directive and direct staff to come back to the next meeting with a report on the status of it and how we can fix it because I, because I'm- Traffic, traffic is getting so, I mean, from Butterfield to town.
Planning will take your request forward to the manager slash public works director, because that's-
However, it needs, however, it needs to be done because it's impacted our ability to approve a couple of projects down at that end of town. It's impacted considerations of circulation when we had the discussion of the gas station. I think it's, I think it's inappropriately impacting our consideration of what's going to happen. And if we're going to have the town center element coming up, I think we need to figure it out before that because I don't want it to be an externality that has nothing to do with what we talk about with the town center and that it's going to impact people's perceptions of it, oh, traffic is already so terrible, well, it's terrible because the stupid-
And at least have an answer what needs to be done to fix it, because if you, yeah.
Yes, and I think if we could fix it and get things moving smoothly before we start talking traffic.
And I, I think it's really important that it's both, it affects San and, it backs traffic up past the high school in the afternoon.
Yes.
Because you, it's the split at Butterfield, but it's, the left lane isn't moving because it's those, those other two lights that are stopping it, because as soon as you get past Pastore, boom, there's flow again.
So there's, the town has a traffic committee, okay? The manager's on it, the chief, police chief, the fire chief, and the public works director, which we don't have at the moment. These, this is typically what's dealt with in, for implementation, the public works department, in policy would be like the traffic committee. But if, if it's all right with you all, it sounds like you all concur with this direction to get this on the radar, we will, we will say that the planning commission with six members tonight concurred that the town, in whatever appropriate fashion, should address the light sequencing on Sir Francis Drake sooner as opposed to later.
And come back to us at the December meeting with a report as to, not that it's fixed, just what the plan is, that a discussion has been had and there's some sort of directional-
You said December?
I meant November.
Okay, and that, so can I include that in my planning director's report?
Yes, you could, sure.
Thank you.
Well, has, has there been a traffic study done that takes into consideration the two towns, San and Selmo and Fairfax?
I don't know, but of course, we had an elaborate transportation study done for the circulation element. But in terms of the coordination issue, I don't know. And I can't off the top of my head tell you whether in fact there is or is not a program in the circulation element on this very point. I'd be surprised if there wasn't.
I think there is.
Yeah.
If I recall it.
So in which case, we have license, we have license. And we'll see who was, who was the responsible party.
That just got bumped up priority-wise.
By the way, the last time, when you said the traffic committee, it's, isn't there a joint, it's a joint town, it's, it's both towns. I'm thinking of the, there was a situation with the, the parking right on Sir Francis Drake. That got worked out within a week, and it was a joint, it was both, both towns working together. I think this is the same situation.
Yeah.
It affects residents of both towns.
It was the public works directors.
It was public, public works, yeah.
And I wonder if there's transportation authority dollars we could use if it's something.
I'll try to look into as much as I can.
I could, I could see it being an element of the Carbon Action Plan myself.
That's right, that's, it's, it has a ripple effect in the Climate Action Plan. We should make sure it's in the Climate Action Plan.
Are street lights-
And that would be something for you to, to add-
If it's not.
On the Climate Action Plan.
Okay.
Bingo, I think, you still want the report?
Not to mention-
I just want it fixed. I just want it fixed.
I don't, I, yeah, okay.
It might be under, aren't, aren't traffic lights covered under a joint powers authority agreement between municipalities for managing those, no?
I, I don't know, I don't know. I don't think so.
One other quick question?
Please.
Easy one. Elections and appointments, what's the timing, the chairperson election is coming up in December? When is that turnover? I'm maxing out on my two, two years.
December.
December. And then, do you know when our terms are? Is it December also?
January.
January, our terms-
Meeting falls in December, because sometimes we have trouble with people being-
I think it was moved up a week. I looked on the schedule. And then our terms are up in January, so I'm just giving a heads up that, put that on the calendar.
The December meeting would be on the 19th, the week before Christmas, the Thursday before Christmas week, and Christmas falls on a Wednesday. And we're closed for business Christmas week and then the following week until Thursday Actually, I take that back, I think we might be open that Monday before New Year's, whatever that was. Anyway.
Well, since your terms are up, have you thought about, are you, do you want to continue? The clerk usually asks me that question.
No, she's, she's got, she's capped out with two.
No, for, for chair, as for chairperson.
Oh, I thought you meant your terms were up.
Well, our terms are also, I mean, the chairperson term is up and someone else has to take it, but the council is going to have to re, reappoint us or not, depending on, and we will have to get to you to let you know whether you're going to have to do that or not.
Right, thank you.
Good.
So now we can adjourn unless there's other comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I can't motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn.
Approved, yay. All approved.